The public has admitted Mayor Danner.
Okay, thank you Leah. I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the city of Gross Point Park. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Present.
Reed?
Here.
Haja?
Here.
Robson?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
Fluid?
Here.
And Mayor Danner?
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Thank you. Before we get started with our agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge some sad news that the Gross Points have endured recently. A friend to all, and most recently a Gross Point Woods council, councilman George McMullin passed away, succumbed to pancreatic cancer. Most of us at one time or another probably got to know George, got to meet him, and if you met him, you considered him a friend. He was, he's going to be missed by all. I'd like to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence in recognition of George McMullin's passing. Thank you. We'll all, we'll all miss him. First item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
No support?
Support.
Call roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Haja?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, motion passes. Next, the approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'm moved.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Councilmember McConnell, I think, is supporting?
No, I had a question about the minutes. Did we, was that included in the consent agenda?
Yeah, the minutes were in the consent agenda that we just approved.
I apologize, I thought they were going to be separated out. I had some changes that I wanted, so I don't know if it's too late or what.
Yeah. Yeah, in future, in, for future meetings, if you see things in the minutes that you want to have changed, according to our process, you need to send an email to the city manager Friday indicating that you want the minutes taken out of the consent agenda so that they'd be subject to a discussion and amendment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rowland?
Question, just supporting Ms. McConnell there. Is there a way for us to do that and revote on these minutes next meeting if she has adjustments to make for?
No, once, once we've approved them, we've approved them. In, in the actual meeting, if for whatever reason we turned down the, rejected the approval of the consent agenda, then we'd have the opportunity to add the items in the consent agenda to the regular agenda. That's the way the process works. Let's, let's move on to the approval of the regular agenda. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fluid?
So can I, just to clarify with the minutes, you said email and ask that they be taken out of the consent agenda if we have changes? Because my understanding was to, just to email the changes and ask that the changes be made, which is what I did. Rather than having to discuss the changes at the meeting, I just emailed my changes.
The, well, under, in our, in our rules of council, I'll read the section that's relevant on the consent agenda. "Upon request by any member of the council, an item shall be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. In order to move an item to the regular agenda, the request must be made via email to the mayor, city manager, and clerk by 10:00 a.m. the Friday before the meeting." So that's the process for pulling it out of the consent agenda for, for discussion. It's the only way to get changes on the, on the docket, once the, once the agenda's out for approval.
So the changes that, the changes that I emailed have not been made?
I'd have to defer to the administration. I'm not aware of those changes since we're working off the consent agenda that was, that was distributed to us early last, earlier in the week. Really last week.
Yes, so councilmember Fluid, if there's any typographical errors, you know, we're certainly happy, you know, if you see typos and or misspelled words, that they be, you know, you can address them to us and we'll go ahead and do that. Otherwise, in this context, I understand that Clerk Blayhut did receive your requests. I did have the, I did for, asked Jane to forward those to the city attorney for review, which he did. And then I believe the city attorney was going to respond to you further regarding those.
Okay, I think we'll close out that, that item. If you have any questions about process, if you could get with the city attorney, I'd appreciate it.
Well, and, and hold on, just. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mayor.
Okay, city attorney Hallit?
Well, I just, you're, you're correct in saying that there's a policy and process in place to remove those from the consent agenda. And it has to be by that specific request. So without that specific request, it does not come off the consent agenda. And from a procedure standpoint, everybody just approved the minutes as presented. And so that, that's where we stand tonight, is the agenda minutes that are attached were just approved.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify because I realize what the, the council rules of procedure say. Last month, for the, for the December minutes, we got a reminder, if you have any changes to the minutes, let us know by 10:00 a.m. on this date. And I didn't see a distinction between typographical changes and content changes. So I sent content changes. I want to say the day, last Tuesday, last Tuesday, I sent content changes. So if those content changes were not going to be handled, or if I need, if I needed to specifically ask for the minutes to be pulled off the consent agenda in order to get those content changes, it would have been nice if somebody had come back and told me so, so that I could have taken, I could have asked to take the minutes off the consent agenda. So what I'm hearing now is the four changes, which were substantive, which were regarding comments that I made, are not going to be included.
So they were not made by Friday at 10:00 a.m. as request to change? And, you know, under the OMA, I, I think we need to be a little bit careful in terms of the substantive changes we make to the minutes. It is not meant to be a record of everything that is said or recorded. I think that's a real challenge, especially when we have six-hour meetings, to record that. And it's certainly not required by law. And so, you know, to your point, no, I don't think the process was followed appropriately. And if there was some confusion, then I apologize for that. But they were not part of the request to remove those from the consent agenda. The consent agenda was just put forward and then voted on. And again, so the meeting, the, the minutes that were voted on are the ones that were included as part of the agenda.
No, I, I understand that.
Let's, let's close this off. If, if you want to pursue it further, we are where we are in the consent agenda for tonight. If you want to pursue it further to make sure that there's clarity for next month, please pursue it with the city manager and city attorney. But we need to keep the movement, meeting moving along.
Well, we need to make sure that everybody's clear on what the procedure is. So I think, I think now it's been clarified.
Yes.
If you have typographical issues, that's not an issue. If you have other issues, you need to ask it to be pulled out of the consent agenda.
Correct.
That is correct.
And, and for the record, all the meetings are recorded, so it's not like we're missing anything that was said. But yes, to follow our own policies and procedures, then it needs to be specifically requested to come off of the consent agenda. Correct.
Okay, so I think we've got clarity on that. Let's move along, we've got quite an agenda. So now we move on to the approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I'm moved.
Sir, support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Rowland. Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Haja?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, motion passes. And we have our agenda. Next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. City manager Seisland, do we have a public comment?
Mayor Danner, I have no written public at this time, but however, I'll ask Leah to share the three-minute timer and see if there's anybody in the queue for the spoken public comment.
And thank you, city manager Seisland. Yes, I do have a couple members of the public in the queue. So Mary, you're going to be first. I am going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Sure, thank you Leah. Mary Rulo, Lake Point Street. So I'm commenting on the agenda item about the planning commission membership. I was on the ordinance review committee meeting last week, and there was a lot of discussion about what to do to bring the planning commission into compliance with state statute at long last. I'm in favor of the one, and, and I want to thank member Reed for all the outstanding research she did. I'm in favor of the path, the path that I think Ms. Reed really suggested we go down, which is to drop the commission voting members to seven members to bring them into compliance with statute and to remove, the simple path to remove one of the council members as a voting member. I mean, it's high time that this commission was compliant with state law. There was also an interesting discussion about whether council members should be voting members of any commission or committee. And I think that there's a really good reason to explore that in the near future and have that discussion. I mean, through no fault of their own, they're going to have, they're going to have outsized influence on these commissions and committees, which are supposed to be, as I understand it, citizen-driven. So again, thanking councilmember Reed for her outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
Anna, you are next. I am going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Anna Signarino at Whittier in Gross Point Park. I absolutely think that it's necessary to have policies regarding donations to the city. And I would like to give a hypothetical proposal to the city council members. I think it would be great if we had a drive-in movie theater in Gross Point Park because during this pandemic, during social distancing, and our theaters are closed, I'd like to offer up $125,000 donation to build a drive-in theater. And that's contingent on the location being inside Patterson Park. I know a lot of folks may not want it in the park. So to mitigate the, the sound of the honking and the fumes from the exhaust, we can, you know, put up a nice fence to, to, to block that. For the folks on Grand Marais, we can put up some arborvitae's and some landscaping to kind of mitigate that. It's going to look like, you know, not only a drive-in theater, but it's also going to be a botanical garden as well. It's going to be lovely. And this can be used for any folks who have a license registered and insured vehicle in the state of Michigan. The vehicle should probably have like seven passengers and should probably be about seven years old with 150,000 miles on it as well. And then the residents who want to use this amenity can pay a nominal fee, maybe $15 per year. I, I think that's pretty exclusive, and I, I don't think that that's really the use of our parkland. But somehow, somebody was able to give a donation and fence off one-half acre of our parkland and give it to a small group of residents who own a dog. It's the equivalent of a dog park inside Patterson Park. And people who donate money are typically very proud of that. We can look at the Okolsky Family Theater, we can look at the Lavine Center, we can look at all those names on the boardwalk. We're really proud of that. But there's also a special interest group that wants to hide behind the name Anonymous with anonymous donations and anonymous money. And those are the folks that we have to be wary of, and that's why the policies need to be in place. And as of today, not one city council member, the mayor and the, or the Gross Point Park Foundation, is willing to put their name on a dog park because they know that it's not in the best interest of the community at large or in the best interest of Patterson Park. So I would like some policies in place regarding donations, especially for, from anonymous, anonymous donate, donors, donors. And, you know, who knows? You know, this Gen Z is really excited about teacup pigs. So maybe we'll have a pigpen in Windmill Point Park next. If we, we don't stop it now, when will we stop it? So thank you for considering that and moving the dog park outside of Patterson Park where it won't be such a bother to other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Max, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name's Max Andrew Veener. I'm a member or resident of the Gross Point Park. I just wanted to take a moment to say, you know, myself and other residents, I have to say these meetings are getting a bit disconcerting as of late. You know, every month, it seems like the meetings are going on longer and longer, and it seems like less is getting accomplished. Prime example of that, in the most recent meeting, I was kind of taken aback about the handling of the DPW garage. Like, I'm an informed observer. I've worked with city managers on construction projects in a variety of cities. And I want to state unequivocally, it seems like our city manager is really on top of things. Like, he clearly knows what he's doing. And from what I can see, this deal is, this deal on the DPW garage is a no-brainer moving forward. Yet, we're blockading it right now. Like, in a broader sense, it seems like there's a disconnect in some people in the community and in the council in understanding the fundamental roles of a city manager and the functions therein. You know, I love the word transparency. I mean, it's a benign word, but it seems to be morphing into a cudgel right now, which is really slowing down business as usual. And it's obstructing our ability to kind of function as a government. And at some point, it's going to cost us. I mean, just now, in this meeting, we spent about 10 minutes going over basic rules of order, which is something that council members should be appraised of at this point. And it's really slowing things down. But, I mean, all that aside, I do want to say something to people listening. I'm also really bothered by the fact, it seems that it's a monthly occurrence now in these meetings, that people are making implications of nefarious motives of members of the city government and of the charitable benefactors that have helped make this city what it is. Unfounded accusations don't do the city any good. You know, we always want the best for the community, we want everything on the up and up. But honestly, this community is only going to move forward with common purpose. You know, it's a sense of community that made the park such a great place, and it's such a place that we all want to live in. And this kind of continuous action really erodes some of that trust. And, you know, it's becoming concerning to me. But anyway, I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, and I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Tim, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Hey, great, thanks, thanks Leah. Appreciate that. And, you know, if you need to gavel me down here, you can, because I'm going to read my comment I sent to Leah for the non-agenda items here. But I'm going to go enjoy the BCS National Championship game here at 8 o'clock, so we'll not be around later to make this comment here. So here, here's what we have here. "When I continue to state my plea for further actionable items in support of our local and small businesses here in Gross Point Park, I am confident in some prepared remarks that will be made this evening by council members that some individuals and businesses will be given a shout-out in this meeting. And while it is wonderful that we are recognizing individuals and businesses as part of our city council meetings, there is and will always be a difference between words and actions. We are not short of words in these city council meetings. I think Max just stated that, and I wholeheartedly agree with him here. But we are short on actions, especially short on actions that can assist our local small businesses, which are going to face a continued struggle throughout 2021 as they did throughout 2020. There are surveys out there that show that 96% of U.S. small businesses say that they have been impacted, and only 13% of those small businesses are confident about their contingency plans to maintain their business. While we can applaud ourselves for our grant programs and for the creation of a social district, there is more to be done. Can quickly create digital surveys available for businesses and residents to gather valuable and specific information for decision-making. We can create an online repository of resources and information, which can be easily accessible and updated daily or weekly with relevant news and resources for both our businesses and our residents. And also form a committee of residents and businesses, those representatives with the goal of creating an event calendar for 2021 that will draw individuals here to Gross Point Park. There is an endless list of items, but again, action is needed by the city council. Let's keep going. Thank you."
Okay, Mr. Koller, as you pointed out, that comment was actually, well, appropriate for public comment, was appropriate on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. I would like not to have to gavel down our residents, particularly with a comment that was well-thought-out and made. So I'd ask, ask you and other residents to please follow the process and procedure. And the process is, the public comment we're in right now is on agenda items only, and public comment on non-agenda items happens at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Leah?
Thank you, Mayor Danner. I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. This closes public comment on agenda items. And Mr. Schilling, I'm going to ask you to turn your video off, please. Thank you. This leads, leads us into our manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Danner. So I'll give a brief update regarding the city administration. Tifa COVID support, Tifa at its last meeting approved round two of its support program. The grant is eligible up to $5,000 for support, including new items such as payment for online ordering systems, tents, heaters, igloos, et cetera. Businesses that have applied already are still eligible for this grant. The grant will be available until April 16th. If more funding is needed, the Tifa board would be interested in increasing this program. Grant will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. And members of Tifa have willingly volunteered their time to hand out distribute flyers for the round-two program for businesses, as well, we will continue our outreach via media channels. In regards to DTE, DTE and InfraSARS crews are still on the north side of Jefferson installing services. However, due to numerous restoration concerns not being fulfilled at the city's request before New Year's, I authorized a stop-work order to DTE on any new work until hard restoration of sidewalks were complete. A few areas in the city had not seen attention, public works expected of DTE. And so DT did comply after my stop-work order, and we lifted that as of Friday. So at this time, you will note on the West Park area of the city that all of the sidewalk areas are smoothed out and tamped down for safety of residents. Excuse me. And DT has also assured the city they will be contacting homeowners to see if a reasonable placement solution can be made to the home, not requiring the use of bollards. You may note that if, on the driveway side, there are significant amount of gas meters on the sides of homes where two, four-inch bollards have been placed. We have asked DT to please revisit back there because the gas code only requires two-inch bollards. And so they have assured me they will do so, and we will keep following through on that. COVID-19 stats, the city as of January 10th, 2021 has 433 cases of the coronavirus that they have had. Public Works Building, city administration awaiting meeting with contractors, architect to discuss mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and updates on cost. That was also discussed at the previous city council meeting, requiring an update regarding those costs. And so that's why you do not see the least topic on the agenda tonight. Ground compacting and grading will be happening throughout the week as well at that public works site. City Hall Building, Spicer Group is sending out bids this week for roofing windows of City Hall. We did have, you know, a little bit of a leak over in our public safety department, so this is an extreme necessity that we move as quickly as possible. Master plan update took place with select city staff board commission representatives. The meeting's purpose was meant to discuss the project schedule, engagement logistics, including feedback about opportunities and challenges. Currently looking at a February public meeting date of the planning commission to conduct the public visiting session. So we're working with MKSK and members of the planning commission to find an appropriate date in February, which will be the planning commission hosting the public visiting session. DT tree trim program, it's ongoing right now. Over three-quarters of the park is looking at significant tree work within the right-of-way. If there are any concerns regarding tree work, please have residents contact Brian Coulter or city forester at City Hall. Any of those trees that are, that are trimmed will be picked up and carried away by the DT contractor and not the responsibility of the homeowner. The city, working with OHM advisors, has applied for a drinking water asset management grant in the amount of about $900,000. Part of this grant includes funding for possible field evaluation of water curb stops, GIS and purchase of equipment for water work by the Department of Public Works, such as a VAC truck. If selected, this grant would pay for 100% of the cost, and there are no local match requirements. We should know by mid-March whether or not the city was awarded the funding for this project, and I'm certainly keeping my fingers crossed. Ordinance review had a meeting, and I won't speak too much because I know Councilmember Reed will have an update. But briefly, we did discuss some code enforcement changes that the city manager, and I'll be talking with code enforcement, will be providing to the chair in regards to possible updates that we could make as an ordinance review committee. And then in Dog Park, discussed at our last city council meeting, city administration's working with residents of Grand Marais to schedule another meeting to address concerns of the Dog Park site in relation to their property. Meeting is to take place by the end of the week for those Grand Marais residents, and I'm working with them right now on a date and time, either on Thursday or Friday. Topics to be discussed include fence line facing the Grand Marais side of Dog Park, added vegetation, and timeline. And the next opportunity for a public meeting of all residents will take place at a recreation committing, committee, commission meeting to discuss Dog Park rules. And so Mayor Danner, that's what I have, and I'd be happy to answer any comments or questions from the council.
Any questions from council? Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you. A few things. One, thank you for your report. I wanted to sort of remind folks of what happened at the last council meeting, where you spoke to the process for the police chief search and using the EPCO firm. But you also committed to partnering with the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement and a number of organizations in that search, either by way of, with the job description and/or narrowing the field. So that was what I wanted to have added to the minutes, so I'm going to reiterate it tonight, so maybe it can be in tonight's minutes. Do you have an update as it relates to the timeline and the process for the police chief search?
Yes, so actually, I've been in contact with Noble. That's the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement executives, working with, he's a Wayne State, I believe, it's Chief Holt. And so I have been in contact with him. Otherwise, I did receive a proposal from EPCO that'll be in the amount of about $4,000 for the oral board. And as of right now, working with the Chief Poloney and also reviewing other advertisements that have been out there. We've been crafting that job description, which I expect to be complete by the end of the week and/or early next week. And so I have some feedback regarding that. As well in regards to, if those, if it gets done by the end of the week, we will go ahead and advertise out to those organizations that I discussed. That'll be for a month-long process. So if we're looking probably at maybe the second week of February that we would have a closing and/or third potentially of applicants. And at that time, then we will have a review looking at those applications. EPCO will go ahead and review its, the candidates. And then, you know, I'll just, yeah, excuse me, I need a drink of water. And be discussing further about those candidates.
Great, thank you for that update. And then if you're, are you, are you willing to share the job description with us so that we can also share it with other groups that might want to help publicize it?
Are you saying once it?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was saying, well, yeah, once it's, yeah, so that we can help advertise it as well.
Absolutely, yeah. As soon as this is done, I'll be sharing it with council. This will be on the city website, will be on our social media channels, and I would love for your help.
Great, and then you mentioned a timeline for the Dog Park. Do you have a timeline for the Dog Park?
So as of right now, I'm meeting with residents, it'll be the end of the week along Grand Marais. At that time, you know, I'll be sharing with them, which will be public as well. I just received another 3D rendering today that I'd like to have all that together. So I'll share with Grand Marais residents, advertise that publicly. And then depending upon winter conditions, which as we've seen, we've had a pretty mild winter, we may be able to install certain sections of the Dog Park within a couple weeks. If not, other than that, we do have, I believe it's in, councilmember Reed may know, but I, I know, I think in February, we have a Recreation Commission meeting. I know, I think in February, we have a recreation commission meeting that I know they'll be discussing further the Dog Park and those rules. And that I don't assume will be done all in one night. And I've already talked with Recreation Supervisor Craig that we would probably look to have maybe a special session of the Recreation Commission to discuss further Dog Park rules. And I know that's something personally, reaching out with Grand Marais residents and others, they've sent us some pretty good feedback in regards to those rules and safety measures that we can take. And so if everything goes, you know, well, we're probably looking at a potential April, May opening of the Dog Park.
All right. And then the last question is, can you just give an update on the water situation? I know that, you know, I shared the letter that you put out, but I still saw social media posts today with people complaining about brown water.
In of today, is that, do you know in specific areas where that was reached? Because this is the first I've heard of that. If you could, if it's easier, we can connect.
I believe it was Whittier and Kirchville, but if anybody else wants to chime in.
Ollivoy.
Shalit. Shalit.
Okay, all right. I will have to check back and see what's going on there. It could be residual from that last event, you know, which is, you know, and I'll provide a brief update, and this may be repetitive for some, but I'll go ahead and discuss. So on December 29th and 30th, Great Lakes Water Authority was testing certain areas of its 30-inch main. And so a crew that was performing those valve exercises, which is part of Great Lakes Water Authority's maintenance program, it's similar to what Grosse Pointe Park will do with flushing of hydrants. You know, they've done this many times. However, there certainly is a concern because there was a discoloration that not only impacted certain parts of West Park, it ended up actually going throughout the community to as far as, I believe, on Yorkshire and all the way over to Bedford and other areas. So Great Lakes Water Authority is looking at a valve and seeing if there is an issue there. However, they're not able to confirm at this time the exact problem that may have started this. They did end up testing water at both on December 30th and January 5th. And they did say that it does meet the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act requirements. And so I will keep, we're working with Great Lakes Water Authority. I've also asked, due to the numerous amount of calls we had and residents that received this discoloration of water, that we, as the city, receive a credit for those days on water rates, and they will be doing so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on the manager's report before we move on? I see a couple more. Councilmember Flut?
Thanks. One thing to follow up on the water issue. We got the statement after the water testing was done, they put out a statement on January 7th. And was it an oversight? Was that not actually put out to the public? Because I went back and looked on the city's Facebook page today, and I could not find a posting with that new statement that came out on January 7th. It may have been emailed, but I'm not sure it was posted. So I just wanted to make sure that that was done or that it is done, if it was an oversight from last week.
I do know it was posted online, and it was posted on email. I believe it was on Facebook, but I'd have to check right now. If not, that would have simply been an oversight.
Okay. Yeah, because I did not see it. And then I had two other questions. One was, if we're talking about renovations for City Hall, and again, the ongoing meetings that are going on with the DPW, I know we have sustainability on Wednesday, but can you speak to any sustainability initiatives that are being taken with either one of those projects?
So in regards to the City Hall project, you know, probably one of the things we've really addressed is, or looking at is lighting and also temperature control, you know, saving in those energy costs. And I don't have everything in front of me, but I am going to speak at our sustainability meeting regarding a program DT has introduced that not only can work on City Hall buildings, you know, assessing sustainability measures and other simple things we can do, but for other city facilities.
You know, I think as Councilmember Flut pointed out, the Sustainability Committee meets this week, and you'll be better prepared to address that in detail because it, that is part of the topic of the meeting. So I'd encourage you to do that then, rather than, you know, have partial information tonight. Clearly, it's being pursued, and I think that it'll be clear at the Sustainability Committee meeting, which obviously is a public meeting, has been posted. Mayor Pro Tim Robson?
I had another question.
Well, I'm sorry. Councilmember Flut, continue.
Hopefully, this won't be allowed. I had a question about the master plan committee. I know, I don't need you to name all the attendees again. I know that in the past, and you have representatives that were chosen from our boards and commissions. But one thing I did want to ask about for clarification was, you're looking at the public meeting date to kick off the public visioning session. Is that going to be its own separate meeting? Or are you doing that as part of, when you say that's being hosted by Planning Commission? Is that going to be part of a Planning Commission meeting? Or is it going to be its own separate public engagement meeting?
Yes. So two things to add to that. One, we did, we noted that mid-winter break is happening in February for the Grosse Pointe Public School. So we're obviously looking at either a date before then or after that meeting. But this will be a meeting of the Planning Commission where this is the only topic on the agenda. So they, the Planning Commission is hosting that meeting at a Planning Commission.
Okay. So can I ask that that be very, very widely publicized on Facebook and all of our other outlets? And with plenty of notice, too, so people realize like this is a, this is a big city project, and we need lots of public engagement?
Oh, absolutely. No, that's something we discussed as a group together. We were looking at that this would be put out in three weeks, in more than three weeks because right now, and I should have a draft tomorrow. MKSK is working on a flyer right now and a social media, you know, campaign that we can be issuing out. So I certainly could use your help and others in, you know, that outreach that we'll be putting out on all of our channels.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Robson, did you have something?
I have three short items, Mayor. Thank you. First, I want to commend the administration on their efforts to remove the ugly bollards that were placed by DTE in the Northwest Sector, sounding like a battle, but you were very, very responsive to that, and I appreciate that. Next quick question, have the, has the Public Safety Department members gotten their COVID vaccines yet, or are they being scheduled?
So about a week and a half ago, two weeks since, you know, our, our public safety officers, our first responders, also trained in EMT, they were given priority first to go ahead and get tested. And this week, the rest of our officers will be able to get vaccinated.
So it's being scheduled?
That's correct.
Thank you. And one last thing. I was pleased to see what I fondly called the Block of Blights at Maryland and Mac is now gone. I appreciate the efforts of the administration, also known as the Verduck Site and some additional buildings. It has been demolished. It was unsightly. And that area looks much, much better. Hopefully, it'll look even better once we get our new DPW building. So thanks again for your efforts. That's all I have.
Thanks. I think we've, oh, there's one, two more. Hope these are on the manager's report. Some of these, some of these things could probably be handled more appropriately in council comment, but Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, this is on the manager's report, and it came up today on the, from a resident on these bollards. Are the residents who have the four inch bollards going to be contacted again? Because a particular resident who happens to be Councilmember Robson's neighbor has not been contacted again. So I understand from your report that either the buyer will be placed with a two inch buyer or possibly all of the residents will be given the opportunity to have their meter moved if there's a suitable location. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And they, at this point, they will be contacted? If they have a four inch?
That is my underst-
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that is my understanding, talking with them specifically about this issue, that they will be contacted. We provided all the addresses in the West Park area that have these bollards. And we have noted actually to our, my colleagues at DT that there are certainly some other Grosse Pointe communities that did not receive these as well. You know, so that was a little bit of frustration on the administration's part. And so they definitely certainly want to, you know, reach out to our residents, their customers, and see what they can do. And in some areas, they cannot, there are some small circumstances where they cannot move the meter, but they are going to do what they can to see about moving the meter from the side to the front. And so I do know of the, that resident request, and I will certainly be following up with that because, you know, this is where it really all started. And, you know, we'll continue to press DT.
I just want to be able to know what to tell residents when they contact me. So we, she and I had an exchange, and she said, I haven't been contacted since, you know, several weeks ago. So I just want to be able to say you will be contacted. Or if you don't hear by a certain date, what should you do? I just want clarity for anyone who contacts me on that.
I would say have them contact our Public Works Supervisor, Patrick Thomas. And I, you know, his email is thomasp@grosspointepark.org. And his phone number is 313-822-5100. And we will make sure they're contacted, and we'll have that discussion again at my Wednesday meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Relin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Nick, for the update. I have a few important questions. You mentioned that the DPW is still researching or getting the cost on plumbing, mechanical and electrical. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm wondering to the folks that were pushing for us to push forward this project, why are we moving forward the project when we don't know what it's going to cost in the end? As representatives of our residents, I think it's the-
But I'd like, I'd like to clarify on city manager's behalf. We did have, we do have costs for all of those items. City manager's been working with the architect and the construction manager to revise those costs, and in most many cases, reduce them. So we wanted to be, have accurate current updated costs before we move forward. So that, it isn't that we don't have costs, it's that they'll be updated with new information.
Okay.
And Councilmember Rayland, to go off what the mayor said, sorry, just real quick, that the mayor is correct, we did receive initial costs. However, you know, I'm trying to schedule a meeting, you know, to, there are some cost savings that we can actually make. So I'd like to be able to have those accurate numbers that I can provide to you and the council. And I also discussed with Tifa that I'm doing so, and we'll be providing it to them.
Okay. So we're, sooner or later, we're going to, as council, we're going to get the full project budget and the plan before we have to vote on anything.
That's correct, yes. From the last meeting, correct.
That's great. That's great. And then the next thing I have is the master plan update. I thought you were going to send an invitation to everyone on council for that meeting.
So I do know that was a request. However, at the request of MKSK, they only wanted certain members of boards, commissions that could be done. Their concern as well is that if we had members of council all there, then it would be an open meeting, and they wanted this to be a closed meeting. And so, you know, at the vice, at the advice and working with the city attorney, he advised me of the same, that we could not invite members of the council to this meeting.
So who was there from our council?
Mayor Denner.
Okay. Because this is a huge, huge project for our city, and it's something that myself and a few others pushed to have done. And I would really, really want to be there at every turn. And I'm a little bit disappointed that I wasn't even told that it wasn't, that I wasn't invited, when I thought we all agreed that we would get invited at the last meeting. So that's a, that's a big, I'm disappointed in that. Again, it's a huge project for our city. We've been pushed, a lot of us have been talking about how we should be following a master plan. And then for our initial meeting with MKSK to not be included, it's disappointing.
Councilmember Rayland, you can, you can definitely be at the public visiting session. This is for everybody that's involved. So definitely, I know, you know, there's going to be a lot of interest.
But I'm an elected official for a reason. I'm supposed to be representing all the residents when they can't represent themselves. And I thought we made it clear that we would be invited. We didn't have to talk, just to be flies on the wall to see, to be a part of that process.
No, but, but, but from the city attorney perspective-
Attorney, you weren't addressed. I don't, I don't, with Roberts rules, seeing how we have a resident bringing up Roberts rules, I don't think you're allowed to talk until you're addressed. So Mr. Seisland, I'm really upset that we weren't invited when we all agreed.
Okay, I think, yeah, Councilmember Relin, I believe you made your point. Let's not have a debate here unless there's a specific item that we need to discuss. I certainly would like to move this meeting.
Well, I just want to make sure that everyone-
You've made your point.
I don't know if I'm done talking about it then. I want to make sure that we understand that a lot of us pushed for this to happen. It was a four to three vote. Some people didn't care if we had a new master plan. A lot of us did. And I think those that did should be involved with this process because we've done a lot of research on it. So I appreciate being involved moving forward. Thanks a lot, Nick. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Can we move along? Mayor Pro Tim? One last thing, and let's move the agenda along.
Yes, thank you. I would like the city attorney to respond to Mr. Ellen's concern and the issue about the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, and I was only going to make a small point, that that meeting was an administrative meeting, that any, there was no decision-making or anything along those lines, that opening it up even to the city council to participate would have sort of complicated that process. And so everything going forward is a public process, and all the next meetings are going to be public and announced and part of the OMA, and everybody will have a chance to participate. So I just wanted to make it very clear that it wasn't, you know, a secret meeting. It was just an administrative function. And going forward, to the extent that MKSK is doing anything substantive, all of you as a council will be included as well as the public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's move the agenda along to committee and commission reports. We have several. And speaking of the Planning Commission, we did have a Planning Commission meeting, and I believe, and Councilmember Hodges?
Yes, sir. I wasn't sure if I'd be giving the reporter you, and I'm excited to be the person doing that. So thank you. Yes, I did enjoy my first meeting as a member, newly appointed member to the Planning Commission, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. I'd be, I'm able to summon my planning background and other experience, hopefully add and make a contribution to that endeavor. We met on December 22nd. Some quick highlights of that meeting and action taken included, one, we established our meeting dates for 2021. So we will be compliant with the guidelines set before us, which I would like to thank the administration for making sure that that's the case. Secondly, we selected our officers, and I'm pleased to be able to congratulate Mr. Malik Goodwin, who was selected as our new chair. I've had the opportunity to work with Malik professionally and know what his caliber is. And most recently, we've served together as trustees on the DSO. So we are in good hands with him at the helm. Selected as our vice chair is Michelle Lindsay and our secretary, Nick Seisland. Third, we did receive an update on the master plan from our city manager. I won't go into detail on that, except to add that there is the potential for two additional studies to supplement that, one focusing on a recreation plan and one on a parking study. The Tax Increment Financing Authority could potentially cost share in that if we do elect to go forward in that direction. And then lastly, there was some clarification provided regarding the Dog Park. So a good meeting, and I'm glad you've had it under my belt, and thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to Tifa. And I'm going to ask the city manager to report on the Tifa meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So the Tax Increment Finance Authority met on January 5th, where we had a selection of officers. And so there's a new office, new chairman, John Hughes will be acting as chair. And then the vice chair will be Marcia Farrell. We went through and approved meeting minutes on November 23rd and 25th. We discussed a DPW facility update that I'd be providing similar information, similar to council's request to the Tifa board. We discussed the COVID-19 grant program review, and that was about $30,000 was spent in round one. And we also provided round two guidelines, review and approval from the Tifa board. And so that is my report from Tifa.
Okay, thank you. Beautification, Councilmember Relin?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Beautification Committee met last week. We have, the beautification awards were delivered. I think all of those have gone out, maybe one or two have not been delivered due to residents not being home. We took this year and delivered them personally. Uh, we took this year and delivered them personally, uh, which seemed to be very well received. Um, it makes it very more human, human, the human connection is there, and we get to talk to the residents and see how happy they were. It was safely done. Uh, the holiday awards were were, uh, defined and chosen. Those will be delivered soon, if not already started. Uh, we will be having a slideshow put up on the web, on our city website, uh, showing some of those homes that have been, uh, been awarded. One of the things that city manager mentioned was the tree trimming from DTE. Um, that's going to be happening the next two to three months. Brian Coulter, the city arborist, is on on the beautification committee, so he gave us a little bit more detail. Um, anyone who's should be getting a tree trim should expect a letter in the mail, as well as a knock on the door before they come in their backyard. Uh, and I know, uh, Nick and, uh, Pat Thomas will be very responsive to any concerns that you guys have, any residents have on that. So this is to maintain the reliability for electrical service. They're going to be trying to to trim the trees as well as possible to, uh, at following, uh, the guided, the guidance of the city arborist. Um, our tree planting for the year is done as well. If you're interested in getting a tree on your boulevard, you can reach out to myself or to the city arborist, uh, Brian Coulter as well. Our next meeting is February tenth at seven PM. Uh, thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, ordinance review, Councilmember Reed. The city manager commented on it briefly, and I know you have an agenda item that's relevant, but, uh, I can give us an update on the meeting.
Uh, thank you. And I will leave, um, the agenda item that's under new business, uh, for discussion then, but the ordinance review committee met on January seventh. The, in addition to the revision to the planning commission ordinance, we discussed long term, the long term goal of codification of the city code. Um, the the administration will be pursuing this as part of the budgeting process, and we'll be presenting that to council between now and then. If you're not familiar with, um, codification, there are several companies that offer this service. The most reputable is MuniCode. Many cities, uh, use MuniCode. So if you want to familiarize yourself with what they offer, in fact, some of the cities that I referenced in the materials I gave to council for the, um, agenda item, use MuniCode. By adopting that system, we'd be modernizing our codes and making them user friendly for city administration, for residents, and for contractors. Um, so that's a more of a long term goal. Um, short term, the committee will be working with ministry, administration in identifying out of date ordinances, and the focus will be on code enforcement and zoning. Um, a number, I know, um, Councilmember McConnell and Councilmember Robson and I both, sort of just touched on, we're aware of ordinances that need to be looked at. I'm sure others of you ha- have, I'm sure residents have, so share that with administration or share that with, uh, me as the chair or anyone else on the committee as we look at some short term fixes. Um, so we will be scheduling another meeting soon. I, it's not established yet, though. That's it.
Thank you. Um, while not one of our commissions and committees, we do have, uh, a liaison relationship with Eastside Community Network and, uh, Councilmember Hodges is acting as a, uh, as a liaison for us to the, uh, to ECN. Uh, actually pick picking up where, uh, former Mayor Protem Clark used to fill that role. So I asked Councilmember Hodges to briefly report on, uh, recent ECN developments, uh, since it is relevant to our Mac Avenue shared quarter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll be quick. Uh, this morning, I attended a meeting of the Mac Avenue Strategy Committee. Uh, we do have a stake and a strong Mac Avenue, and it's good to be working collaboratively with our neighbors, um, including the city of Detroit, as well as our fellow city of Gross Point and city of Gross Point Farms. Uh, items discussed, uh, first included a planning and zoning discussion, which is being led by the city of Gross Point. A project brief oriented around that will be available by next month for review. Uh, it was also noted as part of that discussion that Gross Point Park has planted trees as part of an ongoing, uh, improvement effort along the corridor. Second, there was discussion about a Mac Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority and the formation of such, which is the recommended tool for, um, implementing the findings of the Mac Avenue Strategy Committee. It would likely be funded by a special assessment. There were many questions that arose regarding potential governance, ongoing management, costs associated with it, all of which will be addressed at a separate meeting for those that might be interested. Uh, thirdly, there was a marketing and branding discussion. Uh, it was decided that there would be ongoing efforts to, um, support individual businesses in the short term, particularly in light of COVID, uh, with a long term effort directed towards, uh, branding of the corridor. Uh, and then lastly, we talked about, uh, beautification and the formation of a working committee. Uh, that committee is going to meet bi-monthly in the off months of the Mac Avenue Business Association. So the first of which, uh, for that will occur on February twenty second at six PM, for those that might be interested. Uh, we'll also be inviting representation from our beautification commissions to participate in that. So Member Relin, uh, I will forward you details along, uh, with, um, Chair Cleckston so that you all are informed relative to that and can choose to hopefully participate and represent us well. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Reed.
Just a real quick comment on on those items, um, those meetings with the Eastside Community Network that are community engagement type meetings could be asked that city administration publicize those for our residents who would be interested in attending or participating in those meetings.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that closes committee and commission reports. I don't believe, whoop, Councilmember Fluid.
So when the, uh, when the NAACP Task Force was formed, I asked that we get updates on that as well. And I always have to ask about it every month, but are there any updates from that NAACP group?
I don't believe Chief Poloney is on the line yet. He might be in Gross Point City, uh, but maybe, I I believe Lieutenant Bostock's on the line. Uh, Lieutenant, do you have any updates? Jim, are you available?
Sounds like
I see that he's on, yeah, but it's might have some technical difficulties here.
Yeah. Looks like we won't be able to say too much about, oh, there we go, Lieutenant Bostock. Can't seem to hear you. Uh, you're still quiet. You don't appear to be muted, though. Knowledge is great if it works the way we expect it to. Uh, looks like we've got some audio problems from Lieutenant Bostock, so, um, maybe we'll have to move on and, uh, perhaps, uh, come back to the, to, uh, comments, uh, as as part of, uh,
Can we, can we start getting that in the rotation so that, um, whoever is representing us at those meetings, knows ahead of time and they're not, you know, taken by surprise, and they get a chance to prepare and and let us know what those updates are?
Sure, yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that. That was my oversight. Not intentional. Okay, uh, moving on. Uh, next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Um, and first item under unfinished business is approval of the donation pro- uh, policy. Uh, to remind council, uh, we had a motion on the floor in the last meeting. Motion by Councilmember Reed, supported by Councilmember Relin to approve the gift policy as presented. Uh, we had quite a discussion on that. There were some suggestions made. And then we, uh, then voted to table that discussion until this meeting, uh, for a possible, uh, reconsideration with amendment. The, uh, city administration did provide a rec, an amended gift and donation, uh, acceptance policy for a possible amendment to that motion. So at this point, we are reopening the discussion on the gift and donation acceptance policy. And I see Councilmember McConnell has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I provided, uh, via email, uh, some proposed changes to the gift donor policy. Um, and, uh, hopefully everyone had a chance to look at those. Um, I don't know if you want me to read those into the record, or if we just want to discuss those, but, uh, to sort of sum up, the, uh, premise was that, you know, there's concern about anonymous donations, uh, in terms of, of course, being open and transparent. Conceptually, let's say someone made a donation and they want to do business with the city. We don't want to have any conflict of interest. So I thought that one way to address that would to be to say that we could accept the anonymous donation, but as long as the donor agrees to not engage in city business for five years from the date of the donation. And, uh, some further language that talks about, you know, avoiding the appearance of quid pro quo. And then the second part would address, um, the, uh, public engagement so that, um, uh, and and when a donation is given, uh, there must be a comprehensive community engagement and survey process of the businesses and occupants located with within a thousand feet of the project area. And, um, and timing for that and, um, limitations if there's enough opposite opposition. So hopefully everyone had a chance to look at that. And the whole point was to raise it so that we could talk about it and see if we can make some adjustments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you did share that with us. Might have been today, um, but hopefully most people had a chance to, uh, look at it. Um, the the draft that was, uh, that is before us, without these changes, uh, suggests that there are, that only, that anonymous donations would not be accepted by the city, only through Gross Point Park Foundation, which happens to be a clause I disagree with. Um, I think we should be allowed to accept anonymous donations as a city for for a a number of, uh, good reasons, uh, because I think it, uh, in the case of some, some anonymous, some donors that wish to remain anonymous, uh, they have, uh, great intentions, but they don't, they they would prefer not to have recognition. And in fact, um, and in fact, in cases where we've referred it to go through the Gross Point Park Foundation, not all gifts and donations, uh, would be suitable to go through the Park Foundation, at least based on the traditional, uh, history and policies of the foundation, which focused on, uh, on capital programs, cap- capital improvements. For example, um, there might be an anonymous donor that wishes to support a, uh, financially support a recreation program that Rec would like to do or offer to its residents on a no, on a no cost basis. Are the, the way that the draft reads, uh, that is not the kind of project that typically the foundation would want to deal with its its program support. But the city may would maybe would like to accept that, but the donor may not want to, uh, be public and say, providing a hundred thousand dollars for swim lesson program for, or something like that. So I do have concern about the anonymous. You mentioned in in the first, your first one is, does address anonymous, uh, saying that they can't do any direct, uh, contractual work. So I just wanted to say that they're kind of in one or the other. Either allow them and we have a restriction, or we don't allow them and it doesn't, doesn't
Just to clarify, yeah, it was saying, uh, allow them, but with some restrictions. And I think, as I mentioned in the previous meeting, I'm, I was okay with not having to go through the foundation as long as there's some opportunity to put some parameters around it. And then just to clarify, initially sent this, um, earlier in the week to the city attorney and the city manager. And the city attorney said it wasn't supposed to go through markup and so on and so forth. But so I, my intention was not to get it to folks so late. I I just, um, tried to go through some other vehicles and and so then I sent it directly, so.
Okay, to, uh, maybe to further to discussion, and perhaps I was out of order myself. If we want to dive into your, uh, proposed, uh, language changes, we should probably treat it as proposed amendment. But, uh, perhaps we should establish whether or not the amended, the amended draft, that was presented by, uh, um, the administration, based on last month's comments, should be adopted as, uh, as an amendment. Then we can amend that with further language changes. I think that would cover the, uh, the, uh, the gamut here. So we'd, we'd, we'd end up voting on the mo- on the amendments in reverse order, but if we get them on the floor in a, in a sequence, I think it can organize our discussion. So before we come back to your amendment, um, I would like to put on the floor an amendment to amendment to the original motion, uh, to adopt the revised language as proposed by the administration. Is there support? Support by Councilmember Councilmember Reed. Okay, that gets that on the floors amendment that we we can, uh, then vote on. First, we should probably discuss that, and then we can, um, come back to, uh, uh, second amendment before we vote. Uh, and that would be Councilmember McConnell's amendment. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, in terms of what we were presented with, um, before we received Councilmember, um, McConnell's recommendations, the only area that I, um, really had an issue with was in the preamble. It, uh, introduction, it discusses, um, donations of time and time and effort. I would strike that. This is a, this is a donate, a gift and donation policy for tangible gifts, not for, um, volunteer. And so I think that sort of muddies the waters in terms of what this is supposed to be. So I would just strike that and make it clear that this is a policy for accepting gifts of money or things.
Take out the word time, be rec.
Time and effort. The sec, the third paragraph refers to time and time effort.
Time of a gift, okay, so take time effort out of
The second paragraph refers to time.
Okay. Do you want to?
Let me
Make that recommended amendment?
Yes.
Uh, we're going to have to start keeping track of these.
Yeah, I
City attorney?
Yeah.
Are we making this too complicated?
It's getting more so. Um, Councilmember McConnell is right. She did send these to me earlier. Um, I responded and she sent them, but I, she was doing everything right in terms of trying to follow the process. I guess what what I'm not sure of is the interplay between this policy and our ethics ordinance. In other words, it, her concerns about anonymous donors may be covered by that. And I'm, I'm trying to pull it up right now, but I just, I don't have it in front of me. In other words, it 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 might not be possible to satisfy both ordinances if you make an anonymous donation, but then have business in front of the city. I think you would still have to disclose that. And if it's not the case, then I think we absolutely should address it. But before, at least my opinion as a lawyer, before we put it in here, I I would like a little bit of additional time to check that ethics ordinance and be able to get back to council. Again, sort of the interplay between an anonymous donation and then what's required under that ethics ordinance. It's a, I, I don't want to keep kicking this can down the road, but I think it's a fair point. But hopefully one that that should be covered. In other words, you shouldn't be able to circumvent the ethics ordinance by making an anonymous donation, just like, yeah, subvert, uh, the donation policy, um, and not fit within the ethics, if that makes sense. So I I just, I I'm, it's, I apologize. I just, I don't have that in front of me. I'm trying to look it up right now. But I'm, I'm wondering if that concern is already covered because we now have this new ethics policy in place.
Okay, possibly. So that that'll be relevant to, uh, when we get to, uh, Councilmember McConnell's amendment to the language. I think right now we should probably deal with, uh, Councilmember Reed's recommend- recommended, an amendment to strike the words time and time and effort from the, uh, introduction.
What paragraph?
That's in paragraphs two, two and three of the introduction on the first page. Uh, in paragraph two, the third line has the word time in it.
Thank you.
You reas- could be their resources.
I I think that should be, uh, donating resources, straight, take out their time and and in the third paragraph, just take out, actually take out time, effort or gift. So it would read, any level of donation is appreciated.
Okay, so would you like to put a motion out, an amendment out that will, uh, will come back to, uh, to make that amendment?
I think I did make the motion, didn't I?
Was it seconded? I don't believe it was.
Okay.
So the motion was
To amend the introduction as discussed to eliminate the words from the second paragraph, their time and and time, effort or gift from the third paragraph.
Okay. Is there support?
I'll support.
Councilmember Fluid, okay, we do have that amendment on the floor. I think there's going to be general agreement on that one. So that we'll come back and vote on on that one, um, at the appropriate time. You do deal with these kind of in reverse order. And then, so now I think we And then, so now I think we get to councilmember McConnell's recommendations. And if if we should put put that on the on the floor. We have the possibility here to table the whole thing again. As we continue to fine tune the language so that we like it. I mean, it would be good to get this right so that we all think we're that we've got it right. I see three things that were proposed by councilmember McConnell. We may want to deal with them separately. The first one is about anonymous donors, which city attorney would like to do some research in the interplay with the ethics ordinance. The second one had to do with the appearance of quid quo pro, which is also a problem that I don't think we have, and I think is also covered by ethics. And then the third one is on resident engagement, but it actually restricts the city's ability to use its own property. And that one I have some concerns about for that. For that reason. But those are the three paragraphs that were suggested. Each are somewhat different in what they're attempting to address. Councilman Reed.
I think for the benefit of the public, we should read those paragraphs so they know what we're talking about. And also where, I mean, what councilmember McConnell sent us was what she would like to add or change. I would suggest if she would read and where read, read what she wrote and where she's suggesting it, so everyone knows what we're talking about.
That'd be fine. I'll ask councilmember McConnell to do that then. Thank you.
Thank you. So the proposed language additions are an anonymous donor shall be prohibited from engaging in any direct or indirect contractual relationships with the city of Gross Point Park for a period of five years from the date of the donation. A donator will not be permitted to reign remain anonymous. However, the donor intends to contract with the city of Gross Point Park and then suing five years from the date of the contribution to the city. So that's one.
I think a companion with that would be the elimination of a sentence that's in the current draft that says if a donor wishes to rein anonymous, the donation shall take place through the Gross Point Park Foundation.
Correct.
The foundation will work on an appropriate level of recognition that respects the individual's privacy. I think those two sentences would come out if we adopt this.
Correct. Do you want me to keep reading? I just want to know what.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, and then the second one is the city will urge all prospective donors to seek the assistance of personal, legal and financial advisors advisors in matters relating to their gifts and the resulting tax and estate planning consequences. The city will not engage in quid pro quo exchanges with donors whereby the donor is given a benefit because of their donation to the city when the benefit would not otherwise be available available to them. The city will consider all the facts and circumstances surrounding any donation to determine whether there is the appearance of an improper quid pro quo exchange between the city and the donor. Again, it doesn't assume that there's any impropriety. It's just to have some language that speaks to it, so. And then the final one is when an anonymous donation is given and designated for a specific development, such a development must include a comprehensive community engagement and survey process for residents, occupants and businesses located within a thousand feet of the project area. This engagement process must occur within sixty days of the city's acceptance of the donation. If at least fifty one percent, a majority of those within one thousand feet of the proposed project area oppose the development, it must be relocated.
Okay. I think that a development of that nature, according to the current, the current policy in front of us would have to come before council. Whereas a condition of acceptance council could require this sort of thing. But we may, it may not be appropriate to attempt to do on a blanket basis for for all donations. It gets a little bit, it could be, could be very administratively burdensome, depending on on the location of the of the proposed project.
Obviously, my motivation is to make sure that we don't repeat instances where, you know, those who are nearby are not engaged properly. And so I'm, you know, I have some flexibility. I mean, it's a very ambitious restrictive, so I, you know, hopefully we can discuss and maybe come to a happy medium. But I do think it's critical that going forward, we somehow implement something that in ensures that residents are included when it comes to projects like this going forward.
Right, I think. I can't find it right now, but I thought there was a reference to and get to possible engagement. Part of the city council's acceptance, but I don't have that. I'm having a hard time finding.
Mayor, I can make a comment regarding that. And it's actually, if you go to procedures for making accepting gifts, it would be the second paragraph. It states city staff or the city council may request additional information, including but not limited to scale drawings, renderings, other illustrative documents. The city may choose to consult with other agencies or organizations in that review process of the donation. And as well, the city council may also send any proposal to the appropriate city border commission for review with subsequent recommendation to the city council, which could include portions that I presume councilmember McConnell was looking for, that community engagement. You know, per the donor donation.
So that could be at the discretion of city council or a city border commission that's affected.
Yeah, I I just think it needs to be stronger. If there's a way to strengthen the language, that's really what I'm trying to do is is make it strong.
My concern is is if we make it appear too too restrictive, we'll have a chilling effect on our philanthropic community, which has been really important to obviously where we are in terms of why Gross Point Park is a special place to live. So I want to be careful about not appearing to be not making this appear to be too onerous to the philanthropic community.
No, I'm empathetic and that's why I said, you know, maybe that we can discuss and flesh it out and come up with a happy medium.
Councilmember Floyd.
I I think she makes an excellent point. I think there should be a specific requirement for public engagement. And I think what she's outlined there in terms of only within a thousand feet of whatever is being proposed, I think is reasonable. I don't think we would be talking about a lot of people there. I I think we need more public engagement, not less. And I think it's a good idea to have it specifically outlined in that way.
Okay. Yeah, I can see where that we're at our discretion. It would make sense for a major project, you know, like the equivalent of the Laban Center or or the dog park, which we are involved in public engagement. You know, I'm not sure. You know, that that this process is that appropriate for, say, a bocce ball court. So, you know, I don't, I can't, I'm not going with great examples, but I think I think by codifying it, we might be getting ourselves. We're putting, we might be putting ourselves in a box that we don't really want to put ourselves in. City Attorney Holla, did you have an observation from a legal standpoint?
I understand where councilmember McConnell is coming from, but I I'd want to work a little bit on the language. For example, like project area. What if it's a fire truck or, you know, something that's a little bit less defined as a specific? You know, it's not going to be a fountain at the park or a piece of art on Churchill and you know, wherever. So I I just, I think we have to be a little more careful with our language. If we like the concepts, or I should say, if you like the concepts, I always forget, I don't get to choose. But if you guys like the concepts, I think we have to be a little bit more careful. And same thing with the second one. You know, whether there is the appearance of an improper quid pro quo, that that's just very legally concerning language. Again, I totally get the concept behind it. I I'm not here to agree or disagree with it. I would just, if if this is a direction we want to go, I need a little bit of time to sort of wordsmith it so it fits in a little bit better with the policy. And then I think it's something that's a little bit more defensible in terms of enforcement. That's all.
So just to, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Councilmember McConnell, I'm sorry. Yes, I recognize you now.
Thank you. So just to clarify, in the the last section where we talk about engage in the community, it speaks to development, not like donations and things like fire trucks. It specifically says development. So I I thought I did delineate a little more clearly in that section. And then in the other section that you referenced about quid pro quo, it actually says language about consulting with their own attorney. So again, I tried to be a little more diligent in the way I described it.
Certainly, and certainly wasn't trying to imply that you were not. I did not.
No, I didn't take it like that. That's just one to clarify.
So we can proceed a couple of different ways. One might, one might be to get just a general sense of counsel if these are if this is the direction we want to go in. If it if if it is just sense of counsel, then we probably need to give the city attorney a chance to clean up some language and come, we'll come back with a new revised change. And perhaps withdraw the emotion, the motions that were that are on the table as amendments and come back with a comprehensive amendment down the road. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, so I appreciate the work that councilmember McConnell put into this, and I understand what she's getting at. I'm just going to go back to, I think the simple thing is to not accept anonymous donations, and we had the discussion where we really haven't, that really has not been an issue. Except for in the case of the dog park, and then that's no longer anonymous. And if we, if we leave that language in, then we don't have to worry about all this other stuff. And administration's not stuck with trying to figure out what they have to do, be, you know, have five years passed, have we done this or that? It's, I think it's just cleaner that way, and it hasn't. It really hasn't been a problem and hasn't been an issue. And if it's not through the foundation, there are many charities that I'm thinking like through Fraternal Order of Police, if it's something for programming for police, I mean, there are many vehicles for individuals to give where they remain anonymous and they give through another foundation. I think it's just really probably the easiest way to handle it.
Okay, so that would, your suggestion would be to let the language stand as it was, the administration put it together and not address the first paragraph that was recommended by councilmember McConnell.
Yeah, I I think that probably, I mean, I'm I'm eager to hear from others and maybe just change the language where it says that they go through the foundation or another suitable nonprofit. I, you know, I'm I'm willing to hear from my colleagues if that achieves what the goal is.
Councilmember Floyd.
I think it does. I would agree with that. And then going back to the the second paragraph that that she suggested, I think it's applicable to any donation. I don't think really that has any anything that it has to have the word anonymous in it. I think that paragraph could stand on its own. Because it can relate to any kind of donation that's being made, if it's being made in terms of a development. Anonymity really doesn't have anything to do with it. We could still add the bit about public engagement and still make that a requirement.
So I think I took that to mean that you accept, would accept councilmember Reed's recommendation, but still keep the public engagement paragraph as something that we would consider.
That's what I, that's what I would agree with.
Okay, I understand. Okay, any other sense of sense of counsel on these suggestions? Mayor Pro Tim.
First of all, I'd like to thank all council members in the administration that worked very hard on the crafting of this policy, but I am still having reservations. As I said at the last council meeting, there has been no identifiable need for this type of policy. We've been receiving donations, projects for thirty years or more. There have been no related problems that I'm aware. I am concerned about creating another level of bureaucracy. The more we talk, the more we look into this, the more we debate, it appears to be going to be administratively burdensome. There comes a time where, you know, maybe the administration needs to hire an extra assistant or to all the things we're putting on the plate, be that it has made my big main concern. I think if we pass this, it'll have a unnecessary delay or discourage projects. And from what I hear, there's three or four potential projects in the queue, including a ADA playscape at Patterson. My fear is that these things may not come to pass, but the bottom line is there is wisdom in this, but weighing everything. Again, I don't see a identifiable need. If it ain't broke, why fix it? So at this point, I can't support this policy.
The thank you. The the third, the third paragraph also refers to anonymous donation, which which would that part of it wouldn't be relevant if we kept the policy as drafted. I think that the rest of it is is really ought to be at the discretion of council when we when we consider a project, whether it was a gift or whether it was in our city budget. The the need for public engagement or the process that would be appropriate for the public engagement is something that I think is our responsibility to decide on a case by case basis. And to try to codify, you know, that we're always going to do something. I think it is an unnecessary burden on on the administration, as well as the council for that matter. The, for example, let's say that the city is going to pay for for a development. You know, I think we would, we, it's our responsibility to decide if that new development and requires public engagement and what sort of a public engagement process is appropriate and direct that to happen. Whether we pay for it or a donor pays for it, I think is irrelevant if it's a project of that sort of that sort. So I would disagree with the third paragraph on those grounds. I also just generally agree with councilmember Robson's concern that we are creating a lot of bureaucracy in a small city that fixing is a former mayor Pro Tim Clark used to say, let's not fix any problems we don't have. And that I think is what Mayor Pro Tim Robson was trying to point out to us. Okay, that's just my my observation. I I can't support the first or third paragraphs, and I have real problems with the anonymous provision in the original. And then the second one, quid quo pro, I think that's covered by ethics already. Then it would come as part of our natural discussion of any of any project. Councilmember McConnell.
I would just ask, since we don't know definitively, before we, I guess, quash all my amendments, we at least get an answer to that specific question.
Sure.
And then I would just encourage that we still at least figure out a way to to consider enshrining some level of community engagement beyond just the council.
Okay. Let's, let's do this. Well, let me, let me propose this. I would propose that perhaps we take the two amendments off the floor that we put on tonight and have the administration incorporate that along with working with the city attorney on based on the sense of counsel on on the suggestions that councilmember McConnell put before us and that we, I hate to do this, but kick the can down the road again. I don't know how you feel about that because because we're not really ready to deal with councilmember McConnell's amendments as a part of the package. We are perhaps prepared to deal with the draft that was has been vetted by the administration. And sense of counsel on that. Councilmember Hodges, you had your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I do give some thoughts about where I see things headed, but would agree that we're probably not ready to vote on anything tonight and would like some insight from our city attorney going forward. But short of that, I do have more to say. I'll leave it up to you as to when it's best for me to do that. Ms. Reed might have something else that is more timely at the moment.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Reed, I suspect that, okay, let's, councilmember Reed, why don't you, you had, you had.
No, she had the floor. Go ahead, I'm sure she's, I mean, you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, good. I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that continued the flow of the mayor. So in terms of just a simple edit that I would recommend, that would be on page one, paragraph two, the second sentence, sentence refers to, I'll just read it. The residents have a proven track record in donating their time and resources to bettering the community. I would recommend that the word residents become donors because I think we are separating them out as a group. So that's just a simple thing. In terms of, you know, generally where I would be inclined, I think, you know, my experience has been it's very difficult to predict what circumstances may arise and what unintended consequences, policies that are somewhat binding can have, you know, they can have a detrimental effect. So I think it is important to have good policies and procedures and it's incumbent upon us to find the right balance of oversight while still preserving our flexibility to manage the whole process because, well, and I'll save that for a second and just jump to this point first. I do agree that the Ethics Committee is going to help address some of these. I'm hoping that Mr. Howlett's findings are in alignment with that, but that is what my lean would be towards. I think as it relates to quid pro quo, you know, we do want to make sure not to use pejorative terminology. It's not inappropriate to have certain benefits associated with donations as long as they're provided for as part of your policies and procedures, you know, in donor agreements. And I think we do want to preserve our ability to manage that on a case by case basis. Some, some potential places where we could incorporate some language with respect to Ms. McConnell's concerns and wanting to address them. I think the city manager covered some of it in his comments, but we could always add another item under section four, let's see, item four or, or section five, I'm sorry, section four or section five, we could add a statement like the city manager will agree to, you know, consult with the community as he deems necessary, just to show that that's a value of ours, maybe provide for the fact that our donor application form, you know, does cover whatever benefits might be resulting from the arrangement. So we do have some tools available to us in that regard. But I do want to just make an overall philosophical statement too, and that I really do think it's in our best interest to advance a culture of giving and a partnership mentality in our community. In preparation for tonight, I was really trying to get a handle on how to measure that benefit. And it just became very clear to me that there are many people in our community that care very much about it and they are our neighbors and a list of some of those projects that have many proper nouns associated with them, just so the community that's listening tonight and we're all reminded of the impact that it's had on our quality of life and our property values as residents would be the Akolsky Family Theater, the Carol Scott Theater, the Tompkins Community Center, as well its addition with the atrium, the Golden Family Gym, the Lavens Activity Center, the McKeever Lounge, the Lindell Lodge and Ice Rink, the Mead Fitness Center, the Sail of Two Cities, the Hutton Ice Rink and Fountain, the golf putting area, the dog park, the splash pad, the Windmill Point Fountain, the trolley, the entry at Patterson Park and the Helm Boardwalk and many of the housing subsidies that occur. That's a really impressive list and I think it's one that we want to encourage. So, and looking forward, I, I do think the possibilities are endless if we are in a partnership mentality, you know, particularly Mr. Robson already mentioned.
Think she froze.
Yeah, so, yeah, I believe she froze. Hopefully your internet comes back to life.
And she just mentioned me, let's go on.
Well, councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I think it's, I appreciate what councilmember Hodges was saying and, and I agree with, I agree with her. We have a wonderful donor community and, and it's, it goes during the whole time I've lived here, which is 30 years. I think it's important to remember that we're a government and that our major source of revenue is our property taxes and that's what we're here for. We're also talking about a policy, we're not talking about etching this in stone, we're not talking about even an ordinance. The administration can come back to us and say, look, this part isn't working, this is unwieldy, or we need some more guidelines or we need to firm this up. I think, you know, that's, you know, we've been talking, I think this is at least the third, probably fourth meeting, we've been talking about it. I'm prepared to vote on what administration presented tonight with one or two minor tweaks, let administration work with it, come back to council if, if city administration needs more from us. I, I really, there are, we do have more real business to attend to. So that, that's what I favor. I mean, I think we've spent, we've all spent a lot of time in meetings and also reviewing and weighing in with our thoughts. So that's what I would propose moving ahead with, going forward with the policy that's in front of us tonight.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will put on the, I, I'm gonna, I guess in the absence of councilmember Hodges, I'll add an amendment to the floor here to replace the word residents with donors in this, in the second paragraph as a companion to the amendment that councilmember Reed proposed in that introduction. So I, I move that we include that as an amendment as their support. Councilmember Reed supports. So we've got, we now have a third amendment that replaces the word donors, replaces the word residents with donors.
I am back by phone, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. This is.
So, so I just put, you put your one, one item. Councilmember Reed, I don't, I don't, I don't, or I'm sorry, councilmember Hodges, I don't know if you heard councilmember Reed say that she prefers that we vote on the language that the city administration put before us with some minor tweaks and then if we need to come back and adjust the policy at a later date that we do that so that we can move on to other business because we've got a lot of it.
I did not, so thank you for the update.
So that was, that, that's the essence, I believe, of what councilmember Reed was saying and I just put a motion on the floor, which was supported to make your one wording change in the first, first page. Now, having said that, I guess I, I want to know where, where council is going to weigh in, so I guess I'd put on the floor to, to amend the language from the administration to remove the reference to anonymous donations, so that if a donor wishes to remain anonymous, the donation shall be, shall take place through the Rose Point Park Foundation. The foundation will work on an appropriate level of recognition that respects the individual's privacy. I would, I, I move that we amend this document to take that out. I don't know if anybody supports that, but I need to get that on the table.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a third amendment, uh, fourth amendment, I'm sorry, fourth amendment.
Mayor Danner.
Yes, who is, uh, customer fluid.
Where, where exactly are you making that change?
That's in section five on page, second page, item number five. Towards the bottom of that, that paragraph, item number five.
So can you say again exactly what you would like it to say?
All the language as it currently stands and eliminate two sentences. First sentence, if a donor wishes to remain anonymous, the donation should take place through the Rose Point Park Foundation. And the second, the foundation will work on an appropriate level of, of recognition that respects the individual's privacy. Just remove that, the references to the foundation so that all gifts come directly through this, you know, come, whether they're from the foundation or another source are subject to all the other provisions that are here. It takes a reference to anonymous out. Basically eliminates the, the prohibition on anonymous unless it's through the foundation. So I think it's, I just wanted to get that on the floor so that council gets a chance to weigh in and councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Robson supported my, my motion. So that is a, a fourth amendment. Having said that, I am in favor of councilmember Reed's approach to get something voted on tonight so that we can move on. And then have the city attorney work with councilmember McConnell to see if more work needs to be proposed as a future amendment. So having said that, I would like to call the question on the amendments and motions that are on the floor. So.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Reed, you stated that we would tweak some of these and then have administration come back to us to vote on it or we would vote on it tonight?
Vote on it tonight, we have four amendments.
Okay.
Those, the tweaks were the ones we've discussed.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so let's, let's call, let's call the question amendment by amendment. The first, the last amendment is the first vote, which is removing the reference to anonymous in the Rose Point Park Foundation. Clerk Bligh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
No.
Hodges. Hodges.
I guess I, I, I need clarity on what we're voting on based on what I just heard.
Okay, let me, let me, yeah, let me, let me restate. It's the amendment that, that I have moved, put on the floor to adjust point five that refers to anonymous donations. It removes all reference to anonymous donations on the foundation by taking two sentences out. If a donor wishes to remain anonymous, donations take place through the Rose Point Park Foundation, that would be eliminated and the foundation will work on an appropriate level of recognition that respects the individual's privacy. That also would be eliminated. And we are in the process of voting.
Can we, I was confused as well, can we restart the vote, please?
Okay, we will restart the vote. I will, I'll give you that one.
Sorry, I have a question too, just so I understand too. So this, anonymous donations would still be allowed, they just wouldn't go through the foundation with this change, with this change that you made, is that correct?
That's correct, anonymous donations would be allowed, but they could come either through it, through the foundation or any other source.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, let's go back and call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
No.
Reed.
No.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
No.
Flue.
No.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, motion fails, I believe. Yes, motion fails, so that amendment is not made. Next amendment is on page one, second paragraph, replacing the word residents with donors. So the second sentence would now read, would now begin with the donors have a proven track record as opposed to the residents have a proven track record. Call a question on that amendment.
One, one, one more addition to that, Mr. Mayor, I know councilmember Reed added some changes to that as well.
That's going to be the next amendment.
Okay, okay.
We're getting there.
Just combined them, I was hoping, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Flue.
No.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, motion passes. The word residents is replaced by donors. Next amendment was the one proposed by councilmember Reed and it again addresses the introduction and removes the words time and in the second paragraph so that it reads donating their resources to bettering the community. And the second change is in the third paragraph, last line, removing time, effort or gifts so that it would now read in any level of donation is appreciated. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, yes, motion passes. Those word changes are approved. With those word changes, we go back to the first amendment of the original motion, which is to adopt the remaining changes in this draft that are highlighted and read as presented by the city administration. That is, that motion is on the floor, please call the question.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Oh.
McConnell.
No.
McConnell.
No.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
No.
Uh, yes, motion passes, so we've adopted the amended revised language as presented by the administration. And now we go back to the original motion, which is to approve this amended language as our new gift and donation acceptance policy, which is original motion from last meeting as amended. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Oh.
McConnell.
No.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Danner.
Uh, no. Uh, motion passes, we do have a gift and donation acceptance policy as we wordsmithed and amended tonight. So thank you for all your efforts. And as was pointed out by councilmember Reed, if, if we so wish, we can revisit this at a future meeting to add some more changes. So let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the, which is council comment on, on unfinished business. Any council comment relevant to unfinished business, where we've been so far or? Okay, councilmember Flue.
Um, so I'm considering this unfinished business because we have talked about it in the past. We received some communication from a couple of different residents, a document that was put together by Michigan Economic Development Corporation suggesting ideas that cities could do to continue to promote their businesses through these very difficult times through the winter so that the, the cities that such as Northville, who had closed the streets and expanded outdoor dining for their residents, were obviously having to make some adjustments as the weather changed. And so the M D, MEDC had put together this, this document, it was forwarded, actually I think it was forwarded to us by three different residents, that document as well as some other resources. I commented with several ideas where I just, I just brainstormed some ideas, things that we could do to continue driving business to our restaurants and bars and shops. And I tried to break it down so that there were different events that would be attractive to different groups of people so that, for instance, where typically we would have our winter social where everybody shows up at the same time, we were looking at some different types of ideas that would drive smaller groups of people but continue to, to get people out and about going to our businesses and supporting those businesses during COVID. So this is something that we could address or that Tifa and DDA could address, but the bottom line is I'm disappointed that it was not on the Tifa agenda, it was not on our agenda tonight. I think COVID and COVID assistance should continue to be our priority. And I would like to know what. And I would like to know what's going on with these initiatives and why we haven't heard back. I'd like to know what's what's being pursued and what we are going to do. What kind of initiative are we going to take and how creative are we going to be? And what are we going to do to keep our walkable districts open and functioning through the winter?
Yeah, I I'm going to refer this to to Nick to ask him to respond by email to all of council. Based on the discussion that we've had had to date as to what's in process and and what's not.
I would like an answer right now. I would like to at least get some idea. He can follow up in more detail via email, but this is a public meeting. This is something that's very, very important, and I think it's getting pushed aside. And I would like to know tonight, in this public meeting, what's being done, what's being talked about, what's being worked on, what specifically we are going to do. It's January. What are we going to do to help our businesses through the winter?
City manager, you had off the cuff?
Yes, yeah. So thank you, Councilmember Flue. I know you did send some suggestions to us, which Chad Craig, Rec Supervisor, myself have been reviewing at this time. We're looking to see if there is a possibility of having a winter type like event downtown on Kirchvall and or Charlevois. So we're looking at that right now and trying to see if there's some interest among those businesses. Once we establish that type of event, similar to kind of your suggestion, you know, about the fire pits and looking at, you know, something safe that we could do, even, you know, we thought about maybe having like a socially distanced chili cook-off, similar to kind of what we have down at Windmill Point during Chili Fest. So that's in the works right now, as well as, you know, Tifa did approve round two of its grant program. And as of today, we actually did receive, and this was the first day. We already received six applications for round two, so it's a resounding success. And I would imagine with that amount of interest already, I think we're going to have to, I'm going to have to go back to Tifa to look at more funding for that program. And so, you know, we'll see how that plays out, but I imagine it's going to probably run up pretty quick because that was $50,000 that was approved at this time. So that's what I have available and happy to answer any other questions or concerns.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that this is something that that doesn't get backburnered because I've been, you you know, I've been, I appreciate the grants. I think that's very important. But I I've been banging this drum at almost every city council meeting. And and, you know, like I said, small events, I think there should be something almost every weekend. And I realize it's probably way more work than I realized to put to put any kind of event together. But I'm not looking for a winter social every weekend. I'm just looking for for small things, you know, bingo cards, scavenger hunts, window decorations, just small things we can do to get people out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember McConnell, you have a comment?
Uh, just a follow up. I believe that Councilmember Hodge has asked at the last meeting that when we get the finance reports, so we could get copies of the actual invoices in in addition to just the list. So I just wanted to reiterate that request. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we traditionally have not provided the invoices, although they're available for inspection by members of council at City Hall, and relied on our council member for finance to vet those. So along with the finance director, but they are available for your inspection.
I asked for them years ago and I get them.
You do get them?
Yeah, I I'd asked that they be included. I I always get them.
Okay, well, I knew.
Ask and you shall receive.
So I guess I guess I guess they can be produced pretty easily. Okay, any other council comment before we move on to new business?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't see because I don't have my internet, so I'm a little blind, but I did have two quick comments, please.
Okay, Councilmember Hodges.
Just to finish my thought on the donor policy, I just really wanted each for the community to understand what the power in partnership is and that culture of giving, particularly as we enter into the master planning process and other endeavors where we're going to need private partners to make some of those potentially very special things that emerge from those processes together. So again, I just, you know, or as we tackle large challenges like with the marina or other things, having philanthropic partners will really increase our level of success. So I hope we're close to getting to that point where we can be in a trusted relationship. And and good policy does help make that happen. So, you know, I'm going to add that. But I just don't want to forget that our donors are our partners and very committed to our community and have many choices where to put their money, including in their own pocket. And I'm really glad that they choose our community to do to invest those dollars. Secondly, I just want to remind everyone that the budget process will be here, but actually, the budget process is always here if we're good managers. But given the fact that it's January, that will be unrolling soon. So I just want to remind everybody to be ready for the workshop that usually happens in April. And then there's a public hearing generally thereafter. So we should be thinking thoughtfully about what we want to see included in that and really be thinking about the nice to haves versus the need to haves, so that we avoid any scope or budget creep. And I think it's important to remind folks of this part of the process now as well, because we'll be entering into the review process with our administrative team and establishing goals and objectives for them, all which need to be contingent on budget realities. And with that, I'll just end with a question regarding the board of review process. I know last year, given the impacts of quarantine and that, that process was delayed. And I'm curious if that is expected to happen again this year or we could, or if we can assume a normal rollout of that process, because that is certainly an important piece of the puzzle when determining budget for the the ensuing fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. On the border review, I'm not sure we have any definitive answer on that quite yet, but that's something that we'll have to get back to. But the results of the border review, just to, just to be clear, the results of the border review affect individual properties. But if you look at the, in the aggregate, it should have relative one. In any event, it has little, little effect on the budget as a whole or specific budget priorities and line items. It really affects individual properties. And and in the aggregate, probably doesn't inform decisions on on priorities and and the budget in any detail. Just an observation from past years. Okay, I think we're closed council comment on unfinished business. And we'll move on to the next agenda item, new business, which is new business. And the first item under new business is small cell application review and approval. I will ask the administration to introduce this. We have quite a package in front of you, and I believe the city manager can boil this down a bit for us. City manager.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So council before you tonight. This was part of ordinance 217 that was passed to the city council, by the city council in regards to regulations of small cell cells. This is actually done in part because of the Small Wireless Communications Facilities Deployment Act of 2018. That was passed by the state of Michigan. And so the company's name is Extonet. They intend to install a new utility pole in the right of way near 15601 Essex Avenue for the use of co-locating a small wireless facility on it. And all telecom equipment will be contained on the pole. And this is actually, this equipment was previously on a DTE pole. But due to DTE regulations, they now have to require this equipment to be on their own individual pole. So this was done, this review here by building inspector Ron Supel and myself. Our two recommendations are as follows. The pole and equipment be screened to the existing landscaping per city ordinance, which what that means is we were asking Extonet to consider the area around such, which there's a couple of utilities, there's wooden poles, it's kind of that tannish look. So we were definitely looking for something that wouldn't be sticking out like a sore thumb. We do believe that through their application here, they have met that requirement. And then a yearly fee would be assessed to the company for use of the pole and equipment in the right of way. Legally, by law, we're allowed to charge $125 per the State of Michigan Act, which would be for maintenance around the area, which would be for cutting grass, picking weeds and such. And so I'll give a brief little outline real quick. And then I have Wally Haley, who represents Extonet, be able to provide a little more context. So per his project summary, I'll read the following. Extonet Systems provides construction, ownership, and operation of wireless infrastructure for major carriers. That could be for Verizon, T-Mobile and such. The applicant is requesting approval of its application for permit to construct the small cell facility under our city ordinance. This was on an existing utility pole and was forced to relocate by DTE requirements. There are no other poles in the area that would suit the small cell facility, so a new facility pole was required. Below is an aerial showing the existing location of the small cell and the proposed location at this time. A building permit was sent in to Gross Point Park. And with that application, there was a $300 fee that they met the requirement by Extonet. This is, this pole is about 20 feet from the nearest parcel line of city properties, I'm sorry, excuse me, residential properties. The proposed utility pole will be wooden, will have the same aesthetics as the others. The pole will be about 38 foot, six inches tall, with the antenna extending to 41 feet, two inches tall. And this proposed facility will be operational for about a year of issuing to the permit. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Wally Haley of Extonet to provide further context and seek if council has any questions in this permit. Otherwise, I would recommend to the city council, we approve this application as presented. Leah, can you get Wally on the line?
I think she may have, Nick. Can you hear me? All right, there we go. Good evening, everybody. Wally Haley, attorney from Haley Law Firm on behalf of Extonet. Been working with Nick and Ron for probably two months, two and a half months at least now. Going through your new process under the, what is relatively new state law. The the purpose of the state law was really to provide uniformity among use of right of ways by wireless carriers for small cells. You know, state law, the fees are done by state law. The citing requirements are put in by state law. So it's it's somewhat relegated this down to a fairly administrative function. It is pretty complete. Nick did discuss the the issue of why we're doing this. Literally, where we're proposing the the pole is 20 feet away from a wooden DTE pole that this system was actually installed on. You know, an Extonet system with Verizon antennas and based on new rules by DTE and the type of lines and and configuration that those lines come through there on those poles. Required to move those off of there. And then we're into the point of dealing with a a new utility pole placement under the Small Cell Act. So given that, the materials are pretty, pretty extensive. Probably the best thing for everyone to do right now is ask you questions if they'd like. Or if there's any other particular things that you think we left out, I can hopefully address.
Wally, can you address whether or not that the coverage for this, is this going to extend the coverage for the area? Or is this simply just replacing that area that was on the DTE pole?
In general, I would say it was replacing, however, the antennas and stuff. You know, every, every time you change antennas on on these facilities, whether it's a large cell tower or even a small cell facility, you you're you're going with later generation technology. So in in effect, you're getting better technology, probably better use of data. Critically more important in a time of pandemic, as we've seen with the people working from home, you know, the the residential coverage to Extonet and any of the wireless carriers, you know, has become so paramount with the with the pandemic and and the, you know, the paradigm shift to working at home. So in answer to your question, it will duplicate coverage and improve technology is is probably the the best way of putting that.
Thank you.
I think you know, I I think we may, in as part of our discussion, have have additional questions that come up for Wally. But an observation that I have is that state statute gives us very little room to maneuver in this area and that the administration has worked closely with the with the applicant in the best interests of the city. The the attorney is essentially correct. It comes down to mostly an administrative function. And we are pretty much obligated to approve this, but with the conditions that are that will work in our city. And those are the conditions that the city administration has negotiated with the applicant. So with that in mind, I I'd put a motion on the floor that we accept, we approve this application as as presented. Is there support?
I'll support.
As Councilmember Relon's hand up first, are you are you supporting Councilmember Relon? You're muted.
Yes, I'm supporting.
Okay, so Councilmember Relon supports. Further, further discussion by council? Councilmember Hodges.
Mr. Mayor, just thank you. Just a couple of questions. One, we'll, and this is primarily for the benefit of the community, so nothing substantive. But will cell service be down at any point in the construction process?
Yeah, unlikely. What they'll typically do is leave the equipment, current equipment in place on the on the DTE pole and then bring the new one up, construct it, and then do what they call a hot cut over to to the facility. So if there was any kind of downtime, it would be limited to probably, you know, minimal of of a few hours rather than days.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. And then this is probably a question for either our city attorney or our city manager. Given the current agreement, the way it's worded, I mean, technically, could that area be torn up for up to a year? And if so, do we need to protect ourselves from that?
So under the proposed language, and I believe that it states in there that upon approval of this application, that it'll be, it'll be one year upon that, that it'll be working. However, we do have a performance bond with approval of this application, such that if Extonet were to cause a disruption, that we would be able to use part of that performance bond in the area.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, Councilmember Flue.
Um, I actually have a question for the city manager, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. I'm really just curious. We don't vote on all building permits, and this is something that's in size is fairly small. So I'm curious, what is it about this particular project that requires a city council vote? We've, and the reason I'm asking is because we've had issues in the past where some of us felt we should vote on something, but we didn't. Or some of us felt that a, you know, a commission can handle something rather than it coming to council. So I'm curious, what is it about this particular project that required it to be brought before council?
Okay, I'll do the best I can to answer this. So small cells are relatively new in the scape of coming to local governments right now. So with the Small Cell Act that was passed by the state of Michigan, it really allowed those telecom or telecom companies to be able to work within city right of ways without much of local government control. And so at the time that we adopted the city ordinance, it was relatively new. Local communities were looking at ways that they could work with these companies to, you know, work in an appropriate manner of regulating, you know, within our, within the law that was allowed, which is aesthetics and such. And so part of that requirement, you know, looking at other city ordinances, is that it went through a city council process. I could see down the line as there could be more and more of these small cells that may become before council, that this could end up being something that maybe council would look to provide this to just the building department review and or city council as an example of something that, you know, there could just be more work. So my best answer to you is that this is relatively new for us as a community compared to those other projects that you discussed.
Okay.
In this whole process.
City attorney clarifying comments on this as well.
Or, or Councilmember Flut, if you want to ask your follow up to that, that's fine too, but.
No, all I wanted to say was, I, I was just curious and I'm certainly not, I'm not complaining about it. I, I was just curious, so thank you.
The difference, the main difference, it's on city property. So it's, it, it falls within the city right of way and you guys control the disposition of that property.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor, I have some questions for Mr. Haley. How long will the installation take, sir?
Probably no more than 30 days.
30 days? And for benefit of, of the viewers, what will passerby and immediate neighbors see once it's constructed? It's not, that's not there now.
It, it, it'll be very similar to the DTE wood pole. That is, uh, fairly close to it. It'll look like a utility pole in the right of way. Uh, the difference will be is there will be, um, uh, uh, antenna at the top and then some boxes on the side of the, uh, pole. Um, then, but then again, a lot of the DTE utility poles have boxes on the side also. So I don't know if that's a real distinction. The real distinction is, is primarily the, there's no lines coming to it from, uh, overhead lines like in, uh, standard utility pole and the antenna configuration at the top, uh, of that, of that pole.
Okay, 30 days is kind of in the, I'm not technical here, but it's kind of a long time for, for construction or, or is it not?
Uh, it, it, it's, I'm giving it the 30 days as not only, um, setting the pole, uh, attaching the equipment, testing, testing the equipment, um, you know, to be quote unquote on air. Uh, the, from, from the utility pole point of view, it's no different than a DTE pole. They bring the borer out and they'll, you know, dig the hole and, and set the pole. So from a, uh, a relative passerby point of view, uh, that pole will be set very, very quickly. And that is the primary, uh, view shared with the privacy even after they, um, add in the, in the other.
Okay, two quick questions and then I'm done. The next one is, in terms of equipment, uh, trucks and what have you, will they be impeding the road?
Um, they may during, at least for the, the drilling portion of, uh, the hole for the pole. Um, the, in addition, um, to the small cell permit that is before you tonight, uh, X to net will still be required to work with your, um, engineering department for a, a right of way permit for disrupting the right of way and for blocking traffic. And, 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 you know, the, the standard, the standard requirements of any project in, in the city's roads or right of way, uh, that the Small Cell Act doesn't exempt you from that. So thi- this is, for all intents purposes, this is the, the step one. And then they have to come in and, and work with you folks and get the second permit for, uh, any traffic impediments and when the work will actually be done.
And lastly, I have nearby residents been advised of this project specifically. It looks like the Costello family, the Rubin family, uh, Clark family and Escalaxis family that are nearest to this site. Uh, has there been a courtesy attempt to reach out to them?
If you're asking me as the accident representative, no, we have not.
Okay. I am asking you and the city manager, I think that, uh, would be a very good idea.
Cool, thanks. Any other, uh, further discussion before we call a question? Okay, let's, uh, let's call the question. Uh, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Flut?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Uh, yes, motion passes, uh, the application's been approved. Thank you, everybody, happy new year. Thank you. Thank you. Um, next we move on to, uh, ordinance review of planning commission, uh, membership. Uh, Councilmember Reed is chair of the ordinance review committee, asks for a discussion item be added to our agenda tonight, um, on this topic. So I will ask, uh, Councilmember Reed to introduce it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. Um, yeah, this, um, issue actually came up at the, I believe it was the August Planning Commission meeting. Um, when I and the city, uh, city attorney and the city manager observed that we had eight voting members on the planning commission. Um, the, the Enabling Act, Michigan Planning Enabling Act, um, sets forth five, seven or nine members. Um, and in any case, even if we count the city manager as a member as a non-voting member, that results in the possibility of a tie vote. And, um, and we, we don't think that's a good way to run a government. So in order to, um, rectify that, the easiest way would be to, since the city manager is non-voting, to make our city, uh, planning commission, seven members with the six, uh, resident commissioners that we have. And having one, um, one city representative of city council, uh, join the six residents. And I did provide to city council research, I did on, um, quite, in a, quite a few cities, including all of the gross points and other cities, um, representing similar in size and demographic to ours. Um, none of which had two council members serving on their planning commission, quite a few of which had no member from the elected body on the planning commission. Um, and, um, they varied in size from seven to nine members. Um, interestingly enough, two of the gross points, the city and the farms, don't have a planning commission. So that, um, function, uh, falls to their council. In the woods, they have nine members with eight appointees and one council liaison. In the shores, seven members with six appointees and one council liaison. And I did, um, provide, um, my research. I'm happy to read through it, but hopefully you all did. Um, and then with that, um, we proposed, uh, the revision because in order to make any changes, we have to change our ordinance because we have a planning commission ordinance. So we proposed language to, um, make our planning commission, seven members with, um, six appoint, six members commissioners appointed by the mayor and, um, one council member, either the mayor or a council member, and designating the city manager as, uh, a, I don't have my language right in front of me, as a, um,
Liaison.
A liaison, but not a voting member, thank you.
Okay, um, I, I'll make, uh, make the first comments, I guess. Uh, in, in looking at this, the, um, I think your, your, the ordinance review committee was correct in identifying a potential problem with the existing ordinance and that the existing ordinance, as is written, actually seems to imply that the city manager, uh, could be a voting member. It doesn't, it doesn't actually get specific on that. Uh, city manager, uh, um, does not want to be a voting member, but, but a, uh, but an, but an, but an alternative approach would be to establish, uh, the, the city manager who's already on there as ex officio as, as, uh, and implied to be a voting member. However, uh, having said that, um, I don't agree with the city manager having, uh, being a voting member. So we do have to do something. And it seems like, um, there are two directions we can take. Uh, the, the, uh, draft that's, uh, in front of council, uh, does it by subtraction by taking one of the council representatives away. Uh, the other alternative that, and I don't know if it was discussed because I didn't make the ordinance review meeting, committee meeting, uh, would be by addition. And we're, we always talk about having more resident involvement rather than less. So we could expand the number of, uh, appointed residents from six, uh, to seven. And then with two ex officio members, uh, come back to nine. So that would be another, that would be another approach that would, uh, put us, I believe, into compliance with state statute. And I'd be curious about the discussion that happened at committee. Councilmember Reed?
Um, yeah, we did discuss that as an option. Um, and we could actually add, um, let's see, have to think about that. I mean, w- one option and one, one consideration, and it may be something to look at. And this was part of, um, a discussion at the end is, um, whether the council member should be a voting member on any of the boards or commissions. I've now served on two commissions. Um, the membership does tend to look to the council liaison for, um, guidance, um, which can sway or influence their action. And then that council member has, may have to, um, vote again on, on that item when the elected body deliberates. So that was, uh, something that we discussed. Um, and then the other, uh, issue is, um, there's no reason by charter to have two members of the elected body on the planning commission. No other commission or board has it. It's never been articulated why, and especially when an item would not come before the elected body. Um, so, so I think those are, those were, you know, I, I'm only going to speak for myself, but, um, the, the research certainly bit, uh, bore out that the other cities aren't doing that and the statute doesn't require it. And there was never, I mean, at least historically, uh, we don't know the reason why, but that's just what happened. Um, the easiest fix and to get us into compliance was what I proposed, but certainly it's not the only way.
Right, yeah, I thought, I thought there were two, there were two, uh, those two approaches. Um, interestingly enough, as you pointed out, Gross Point City and Gross Point Farms, um, is the entire legislative body, uh, that constitutes the planning commission. So in fact, all the elected officials are involved in that. Uh, the, the point about whether or not, uh, council members of commissions, uh, should be voting members. In some cases, it's a requirement statute in the case of, uh, I think it's the.
EDA, I think.
EDA, I think it's a requirement of statute. Uh, in other cases.
That may be the only one.
It would depend on the bylaws of the individual commission. I think, yeah, you're right, I think the only one that the statute requires it. The other, the other, um, as, as you know, although you didn't, you didn't include it, the, um, uh, the statute which governs, uh, the planning commission, uh, as you pointed out, does, does allow for five, seven or nine members. Um, and, but it also, uh, is really open on how you constitute that commission. It gives you, I'm, I'm going to read the relevant sentence. It basically gives us the opportunity to construct it any way we wanted to.
Right.
And, uh, and the, uh, the way that it's constructed now, um, is just historical fact for the, you know, 18 years that I've been involved in council. This has been the structure of, of the planning commission. I think at a point that during some periods of time, the city manager may have even had a vote. Um, but at any rate, the, the, the relevant sentence that gives us the latitude to do kind of what we want, um, is in the state statute. And I'm going to read it. In a city, village or county, where's, uh, city, that's us, chief administrative official or person designated by the chief administrative official, that would be the city manager in our case, if any. This, the chief elected official, that'd be, uh, the mayor. One or more members of the legislative body, that's council, or any combination thereof may be appointed to the planning commission as ex officio members. So it gives us, it gives us, uh, quite a bit of latitude. And it's that latitude, I think there that, uh, allows the city and the farms to use the legislative body as their planning commission and, uh, gives the city the, uh, opportunity to construct it, um, in any way they want in terms of ex officio members.
Yeah, interestingly, I don't mean to monopolize the debate, but our planning commission is required by our charter. Um, but I do suppose we could, just as we have the zoning, we are the zoning board of appeals, the council is, we could designate the council, the planning commission. I, I suppose we could do that and be in compliance with our charter.
I suppose that's right, but I wouldn't recommend it.
I, I'm not suggesting that. We have enough meetings.
You're right, the, the language in the, in the charter is very general. It just says we have to have a, a planning commission, uh, by ordinance, uh, compliant with state statute or something to that effect. And so this would be the ordinance that affects it. Uh, Councilmember Flut?
Um, I think that the idea of having a, a liaison to each of our commissions is really interesting. And it's not something I had thought about before, but I think, um, I certainly like things to be uniform and consistent. And, um, if planning commission is the only one of our commissions that has two council member, two council members on it, um, you know, that it's allowable, but that does make it different from our other commissions. And then, um, it is, it's not, it's not problematic, but it is worth considering that with each of those commissions, you have a council member voting twice. So, you know, every time a commission votes on something, uh, a council member votes on it. And then it goes to council, if it goes to council, and then that council member votes again on the same item. Um, I think there's an argument to be made for making those positions liaison positions, letting those commissions form their own opinions and make their own recommendations and vote without any council members voting and then having it come to council. And that's the time when city council members give their influence and, uh, and their, um, their influence and their input. Um, I, that, that seems consistent and logical to me.
Yeah, my, my view on that is it would be too large a departure from where we've been is, and that the, uh, the notion of having a council representative, uh, vote on the planning commission is not only in bounds, but it's, uh, consistent with, um, lots of other cities, uh, based on, uh, Councilmember Reed's research. Um, I think the terminology in your research says one, says council liaison, but in fact, it's a, it's an ex officio voting member, um, in all those cases in order to be compliant with the, uh, statute.
Not all of them, but you're right. And, and I, I think I, I highlighted that where, um, I said zero from the governing body. And that was for Plymouth, Northville, um, Birmingham had interesting sort of hybrid where they had, um, two alternates.
Yeah, and, and like you say, the, and the, uh, and the woods, uh, I'm sorry. You know, the woods has a total of nine members with eight appointees plus a liaison, the shores.
Liaison, I was.
But, yeah, exactly.
Were actually a voting member, yes.
So the woods and the shores, uh, have structures that are very similar to ours, except that we had the two ex officio voting members. And so the, uh, so it's not unusual. And in, and in fact, it's certainly not unusual to have, uh, a representative of the council as a voting member. In our case, it is a little unusual based on the research that we have too.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I will mute myself and let others weigh in.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to commend, uh, Councilmember Reed for the outstanding, as usual, and extensive research she has done on this matter. You know, the math is, is obviously simple in many respects. We need to go to five, seven or nine members. Uh, a lot of different examples with different cities. One question I would have that, that might need research by the city attorney. I think statute says that once a member is assigned to a commission, a planning commission, uh, they have that position unless there's some cause to remove until the end, the expiration of their term. How would, uh, that issue interface with what may be being suggested tonight?
Uh, I, I think that's correct. Um, and so the ex officio member serves out the term of their official position. And then when that expires, there would either need to be reappointed or, uh, replaced.
That is correct. So in this case, we have one council member whose term ends in 2023. And the mayor's term expires every two years. So in the give and go of things, uh, if one were to step aside, I guess they could voluntarily step aside. I don't know, but I wanted to bring, I wanted to bring that up. Uh, in a way, I'm in favor of, of expanding membership among citizens. The reason I do that is we have, have this new master plan before us. I think there's going to be, uh, obviously a very busy planning commission. Uh, there may be needs for subcommittees on the planning commission. Uh, so I'm leaning towards expanding that membership. Uh, and either, and perhaps going down to one, uh, council member. Uh, that would get us to, uh, seven people.
Right.
Six plus the. Six plus the the one, seven, well, two more, two more citizens, and then one ex officio member would get us to
It goes to nine.
Yes. Does that too many folks?
I I don't mind the, I don't mind the nine.
A thought.
Although, you know, I I have to say, we've had, we've had a lot of fun trying to populate the planning commission of late, so maybe it's not that easy. But I think that, but I, but I think the principle of more resident involvement is is good. And so I, I certainly would not be against expanding it to eight, eight appointees from our six, if we chose to reduce the number of council representation to one. Or expand it to seven with two with our two existing council reps. I think at the end of the day, eventually, we're going to have to have a recommendation by the ordinance review committee that we can vote on. I think this is intended as a discussion so we can get the sense of council. Other members of council may want to weigh in on their preferences. Councilmember Relon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to reiterate what councilman Robson said. It's it's a lot of good work and a lot of good research. It makes it easy to to jump on to this topic and know where we're going. I'm I'm concerned as well as having two people from council voting on the planning commission. I would love to have that down to one, either the you, Mr. Mayor, or and then also have a council liaison that can go there and not vote, but still have that voice and sharing of ideas with with the commission. On the beautification commission, I know we have a lot of residents. I think there's fifteen or fourteen, thirteen, plus myself as a liaison there that votes. Standardizing all that would be really, really good, a good place to start. And then, as councilmember Robson said, there is going to be a lot of work with subcommittee's possibilities. I think we can approach that as needed if we need to expand it at that point to to add two more residents to it, which which would be fantastic for those subcommissions, or if those subcommissions can have residents that aren't on the actual commission, help them out because there is a lot of people that want to help with planning commission. So I think that could be accomplished with still just seven total members and one from council. Thank you.
Okay. Any any other statement of preference? Councilmember McConnell.
No, I I don't have a lot to say, I I could, because I, yeah, I'm on that committee. Again, thank you, councilmember Reed, for your leadership. So I I support these proposed changes. I think it makes a lot of sense to have, to not have people have to double vote, frankly. And if there's opportunities, of course, for more resident engagement, I support that as well. Thank you.
So I think with that, we might want to kick it back to the, oh, sorry, councilmember Hodges.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I I don't have strong feelings either way, but at least want to weigh in. I I do think, you know, in today's environment, we are an actively engaged community, so leaning towards the nine would allow us to meet that expectation. You know, with that said, we're in another, when we're in another era of our community, we might find that we don't need that number. So I I I don't want to sound wishy washy on this, but you do sometimes see language incorporated that gives you the flexibility you need. So perhaps there's the option to utilize language like, let me see here, I have, you know, can we, let's see, give ourselves a grace by allowing up to nine, but no less than seven, and up to two, but no less than one city council representative seated on the planning commission. So that's something to consider. But again, I don't feel super strongly. You know, as I was doing my homework and trying to inform my own thinking, I did look at the various populations of each of our peer communities. We are second in population size to Gross Point Woods, you know, so that potentially gives us some guidance to try to inform our opinion. They happen to have the nine members and one council represented it on the planning commission. So again, not real strong feelings, just inserting some thought to help us get to where we need to get. But absolutely, compliance is important. So thank you to the ordinance review committee for identifying this issue and getting us to the point where we can ensure we're doing exactly that, complying.
Yeah, the councilmember Reed may want to, and the city attorney may want to weigh in, but I think the idea that we have a range or or choices that we could invoke from time to time would, I I would read it as in violation of state statute.
Yeah.
I think we've got to set
I'd be uncomfortable with that.
Well, we've got to set a number.
Yeah. But from what I'm hearing from council, and that was part of our discussion, I know council member, I'm sorry to just jump in like that. Councilmember Robson wanted to hear from the the full body, and so I think we have an idea of what council would like, and we'll come back in February with a proposal. Is that
That would be fine with me. I think I think with that, we can close the discussion, and we'll pick it back up when we've got a specific recommendation from the ordinance review committee. Thank you very much. It was a good discussion, and I agree it was good research to fuel that discussion. So I appreciate all the work of councilmember Reed and the deliberation of the committee. All right, now we move on to some some, some things that are kind of, kind of fun in the sense that we get to recognize some of our citizens that are some of our references have given a lot to our city and are moving on from their, from their positions in various ways. So there are a series of resolutions for us to address that I'm going to recommend we adopt tonight and and to recognize service. And we'll start with Gerald Schilling. Jerry Schilling has been on the Rec Commission for a long time, so I'll read the resolution as as it is presented. Whereas Jerry Schilling has been a lifelong resident of Gross Point Park, currently residing at eight fifty Bedford, where he and his wife Julie raised their two children, Leah and Clay. Whereas Jerry Schilling is the founder and owner of B C Fulfillment since nineteen ninety-seven. Whereas Jerry Schilling has served on the Recreation Commission from nineteen eighty-six through two thousand twenty, contributing many ideas toward projects over the years, including the Lavins Fitness Center, Golden Family Gymnasium, Yocolski Theater, Carol Scott Theater, improvements to the Olympic Pool, Zero Depth Pool, maintaining the marina, improvements to the tennis courts, implementing pickleball, improvements to the Tompkins Community Center, the atrium, the splash pad, the golfing green, the hut and ice rink and fountain, the Lindell Lodge, the helm boardwalk, and the addition of kayak racks have made Winnebago Point and Patterson Park what they are today and is enjoyed and is enjoyed by all the residents of Gross Point Park. Resolve that the mayor and members of city council of Gross Point Park join and acknowledge acknowledging Gerald Schilling for his many years of dedicated services, service to the residents of Gross Point Park, serving on the Recreation Commission. Very impressive, Mr. Schilling was there for a lot. I move that we approve this resolution. Is there support? Councilmember Reed, I believe, supported.
I support.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. Motion passes, the resolution is adopted. Jerry has seen a lot on the Recreation Commission from his early days all the way through. He was the longest-serving member on the Rec Commission by by measure. And I truly appreciate all of his service. And, you know, there there are quite a list of accomplishments of in our parks and rec, our park park system on his watch. So I think Jerry may be in attendance if if he wishes to come on the screen and and say a word or two, we'll let him do that. I don't know if council, before he does that, anybody else has anything to say about Mr. Schilling? But I think the resolution is pretty complete. Mayor Protem, I saw your hand up.
Well, just to reiterate what you just said, Mayor. Jerry exemplifies the dedication to community, to community and volunteerism for many, many, many years, obviously. And pretty much all the major projects within parks and recreation, he's been a major part in that. So Jerry, I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I will echo both your comments, Mayor Denner and Mayor Protem Robsons. I had, I've had the pleasure of serving with Jerry on the Recreation Commission. Regretfully, we only had one live meeting before the pandemic struck, but we've had some Zoom meetings. I really appreciate his input. Our parks are in great shape, and I know that's in large part due to his service over these past many years. So thank you, Jerry. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Relon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Schilling, thank you so much for all you've done. I did have the pleasure of working with you for about eleven months before I was elected to council. And that Parks and Rec Commission is is wonderful. It's a good group of people, and it really makes, drives what is the, one of the, one of the best things about our community, the parks and the activities that we have there. So thank you so much, nineteen eighty-six, just to reiterate that. Thanks.
Okay, Jerry, did you want to show up? I'm sorry, councilmember Hodges. We've got a lot of these tonight, you know.
For our honorees, they waited till the end, and they deserved it. So I I know Jerry, when I was looking at your bio and saw that your company name is B C Fulfillment, I know what that means. You're fulfilling your customer expectations, right, and their needs. But I think it also carries over into how you live your life, because you certainly fulfill the needs of your family and your community. And just on a personal note, Jerry, for the rest of the community, is one of those folks that comprise this crazy crew of us that are usually up in the predawn hours, trying to get our heart rates up. And Jerry is always there with a bright hello, a bright good morning, and even sometimes giving you a little piece of reflective equipment to keep you safe when you're out there. So Jerry, I just want to know, you to know how much I really appreciate your positive attitude, how much you care about our community, and all that you've done to fulfill a really important duty. Thank you for all you've done for us. I look forward to seeing you out tomorrow morning. No matter how late this meeting goes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, with that, Jerry, are you there? Did you want to say anything, or are you going to pass? You may not still be there. I don't know. There he is.
Oh, I'm here. Thank you all for your wonderful and kind words. It's been my honor to do what I've done with the Parks Recreation Commission. Having been a child that played in those parks, a parent whose children played in those parks, and now a grandparent. They mean a lot to me. They mean a lot to our community. And I thank you for your words, and I thank our community for allowing me to to having been able to participate. So the the parks are wonderful. They're they're the shining beacon of our community and the envy of everybody that comes to visit and sees them. So thank you all very much. Please stay safe. Please stay healthy. And Michelle, bring the hot chocolate in the morning, please.
All right. Thanks, Jerry. Great to see, great to see you. And 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 again, thank you for your exemplary service. Hope to see you around town. I know I will. Okay, let's move on to the next one. Patrick Mann. Whereas Patrick Mann has been a resident of Gross Point Park since nineteen fifty-five and currently resides at eleven fifteen Wayburn, where he raised his two children with his wife Patsy. Whereas Patrick Mann served in the Korean War for four years. Whereas Patrick Mann had a career as a branch manager at Manufacturers Bank and retired after thirty years of service. Whereas Patrick Mann contributed his time after retirement to various charitable foundations. Whereas Patrick Mann served on the Tax and Increment Finance Authority Board since its inception in nineteen eighty-six through two thousand twenty, whereby improving the northwest sector of the city through numerous TIFRA programs, including home improvement loans, loans for commercial facade improvements, rental rehabilitation grants, off-street parking improvements, streetscape improvements on Mac, Charlevoix, and Kircheval, the decorative lampposts throughout the district, the COVID nineteen Business Support Program, and the bond to finance the new Department of Public Works building on Mac. Resolve that the mayor and members of the city council, the city of Gross Point Park, join in acknowledging Patrick Mann for his many years of dedicated service to the residents of Gross Point Park by serving on the TIFRA board. I move we adopt this resolution. Is there support? Or Mayor Protem supports. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. I don't know if Pat's on the call or not, but he, his, his contribution to our city in the northwest sector is is really, I was going to say second to none, but is a, is a tie with someone else that we're going to talk about in a minute. But the the improvements that were made through through our TIFRA board are truly impressive. In many ways, the existence of TIFRA and the service of those board members is what revitalized, revitalized and has kept healthy an important neighborhood in our, in our city. So I truly appreciate his dedication over these many, many years. Any other members of council have any comment? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. The Pat, Patsy Mann, they were icons in our community. The resolution states they've been residents since nineteen fifty-five, before many of us were were even born, obviously. And let us not look over the the second sentence, whereas Patrick Mann served in the Korean War for four years. Thank you, sir, for your service. The mayor just discussed all of your accomplishments on TIFRA. You've been there for thirty-four years, Pat, and we certainly appreciate it. But Pat's history goes beyond that or before that. Pat's other claim to fame was he was very involved in getting the, if you will, the backyards of Barrington and Wayburn back on the Gross Point Park tax and property rolls. It was a weirdness many years ago. If you lived on Barrington and Wayburn, your house and your front yard were in Gross Point Park, your backyard was in Detroit, and that had all sorts of challenges and problems. There are some lawsuits, I guess. There were some negotiations with the city of Detroit. But Pat was a leader there and very much involved in that, and made things rational in terms of the backyard. So not just since nineteen eighty-six, but before that, he's been very involved in the community. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, and I would just note that the Manns have lived here since nineteen fifty-five. Our city was incorporated in nineteen fifty, so they are, they pretty much have been with Girls Point Park the whole time. And, you know, I truly appreciate his service, his perspective, because it goes beyond just the thirty-plus years on TIFRA. It goes to his, his living here for, I didn't do the math, but for sixty-plus years. And we've all benefited from that. So thank you, Patrick Mann. We really appreciate you.
Okay, thanks. Pat, I don't know if you're on the call or not. If you are, he is not. Okay.
And Mayor Denner, sorry, I just want to tell you, he was aware. I did speak with him and Patsy, and they told me that this was probably going to go way past their bedtime. But I I will, I will make sure that all of the lovely comments are relayed back to him because I know that he was extremely appreciative of him being recognized. So.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Thomas McDonald. Whereas Thomas McDonald was a Gross Point Park resident for many years, where he resided with his wife Dorothy and raised five sons. Whereas Thomas McDonald obtained a degree from the University of Michigan in real estate. Whereas Thomas McDonald joined and continued to be active with his son Marty, and continues to be active with his son Marty in the family business founded by his father that was established in nineteen forty-eight, known as Crown Realty, and which has been located in the same building on Charlevoix for seventy-three years. Whereas Thomas McDonald served on the Tax and Increment Finance Authority Board since two thousand twelve, whereby improving the northwest sector of the city by providing the streetscape improvements on Mac, Charlevoix, and Kircheval, and the bond to finance the new Department of Public Works building on Mac and the COVID nineteen Business Support Program. and the COVID-19 Business Support Program. Resolve that the mayor and members of the City Council, the City of Gross Point Park, join in acknowledging Thomas McDonald for his years of dedicated service to the residents of Gross Point Park by serving on the TIFA board. I move the resolution to be adopted. Is there support?
Or.
Councilmember Rowland, got there first. Call roll, please.
Whoops. Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. Tom's been a fixture around Gross Point Park for his, pretty much his, his whole life. Very much of his life, that's for sure. Before he was on the TIFA board as an active part of Crown Realty and their, and their investments in service to, to the park and its, and its properties and residents. But specifically on TIFA, his time and talents has been most appreciated. I don't know if anybody else on council has any observations. And I don't know if Tom's on the call or not. I don't, yes, I believe, yeah, I believe that he was not going to be available. So, probably past his bedtime, too. But he's been a great, great citizen, a great resident, and I truly appreciate all of his service. Okay, James Odell. Whereas James Odell has been a lifelong resident of Gross Point Park and currently resides at 1103 Delphor, where he raised his three children with his wife Nancy. Whereas James Odell is the owner of Point Printing, a family-owned and operated business located in Gross Point Park. Whereas James Odell is a certified financial planner. Whereas James Odell has served on the Tax Inc. Finance Authority Board as chairman since its inception in 1986 through 2020, whereby improving the northwest sector of the city through numerous TIFA programs, including home improvement loans, loans for facade improvements, rental rehabilitation grants, off-street parking improvements, the streetscape improvements on Mac, Charlevoy, and Kirchville, the decorative lampposts throughout the district, the COVID-19 Business Support Program, and the bond to finance the new Department of Public Works building on Mac. Resolve that the mayor and members of City Council, the City of Gross Point Park, join in acknowledging James Odell for his years of dedicated service by serving the TIFA board. I move this resolution to be adopted. Is there support?
Support.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Jim is known to a lot of people around in our community because of his business Point Printing, which used to have a physical location on Kirchville for many, many, many years. And is known to also a lot of us for his role as Chair of the TIFA Board. Not only did he serve for 34 years on the TIFA Board, but he served as its Chair since its inception. That's quite a record. And through his leadership and, and the work of that, that board, lots of improvements have occurred in the northwest sector, many of which we've talked about. And it's the same list as for Mr. Mann, because they served together from the beginning of the, of the TIFA Board. I don't, again, I don't know if Jim is on the call, but any other council members have comments?
Jim is on the call, Mayor Denner.
Okay, good. Councilmember Hodges, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know when the TIFA was created in 1986, I'm sure there were plenty of dreams and hopes at that time, and much has been accomplished. And one thing that I think we don't recognize often enough that I found very helpful in my due diligence when having to make some really important decisions in the last year, was the fact that our captures in the Tax Inc. Financing District have far exceeded projections that were created in 1986. And that is really good news. And it means our property values are also higher than expected. And it's very clear that the leadership provided by the TIFA directly impacted that. So, I'd like to personally thank you, Mr. Odell, for making that reality, as well as your colleagues, Mr. Mann and Mr. McDonald. And just sincerely thank you for all that you've done. And I hope that you very much feel all of the satisfaction that comes with a job well done and the sense of gratitude that we feel for you.
Anybody else? Mayor Pro Tem.
I would just quickly follow up. Jim is, is a good friend. We all know him as a councilman gentleman. His enthusiasm over the years is absolutely amazing. I could be wrong, but I also think Jim is a lifelong resident of Gross Point Park.
Resolution has been, apparently.
And, and he can be very proud of the accomplishments of TIFA under his leadership. As Councilmember Hodges stated, property values are very high. And that's not by accident. The TIF has been a big part of that, and his leadership has been outstanding. So, Jim, thank you very much.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, just real quickly. I've known Jim. Our kids went to school at DeFer Elementary together. So, I, I knew him from the days when our kids were young children. But also in his service on the TIFA, I, I just really want to add, I want to thank him for the way he ran the meetings during these Zoom meetings. He did a really nice job of, of including the residents, and he ran them very respectfully. And I know it was difficult, probably not something he'd ever done in his tenure. And so, I just want to add that I really appreciate him doing that during these difficult times.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Mr. Odell, thank you. We met, we met a few years ago at a TIFA meeting. I want to say thank you for your level of calm, class, and, and a true desire to do what is correct and transparent, including, as Councilmember Reed said, the residents, all the residents get a voice at your meetings. You ran those meetings with a lot of admirability. So, I want to say thank you. And I want to mention again, 1986. Wow, that's, that's a long time to serve in a city. I don't know if any of us can do that. Mr. Robson may be doing that, that length of time, but I don't think any of us can make it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember McCall.
I just wanted to frankly acknowledge all the honorees and thank them for their commitment and their service, particularly our veteran who was, was named here. So, I just want to, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the entrepreneurs as an entrepreneur, and of course, the Wolverines. So, go Blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fluet.
I also wanted to say thank you to everyone that is receiving a resolution and appreciation from the city tonight. But I've had very little interaction with a lot of these, of these people. However, there was one thing I wanted to mention about Mr. Odell, and that is that I've had several people mention to me one word about him. And it's, it's interesting, because several people described him the same way, and that is to say that he was a gentleman. And I think that's a very nice word. It's the kind of thing that he should be aware of. He should know that there are all these people who have these kind words to say about him. So, I wanted to make sure that that was passed along. And again, I appreciate his service.
Thank you. Jim, it's your turn for rebuttal if you're there.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It's been such a pleasure to serve this city for the last 34 years. I, I didn't realize how long it was till I thought about it for a while. And I've been doing this since before our current city manager was born. So, as I say, great, great pleasure. When I came on the board, there was a lot of disinvestment in, in the area. What's now Point Hardware was a boarded-up buildings. There were residents, some of the residential units were looking pretty dilapidated. And through the work of not just the TIFA board, but the community as a whole, individual residents, business owners, landlords, the Cotton family, Eric Goose, and I went through two houses that he rehabbed, and he just did a beautiful job on them. It's that type of cooperation that has made the TIFA area and all of Gross Point Park continue to be a better and better place to live. So, thank you so much for allowing me to serve the city.
Thanks, Jim. It's, you're to be congratulated, that's for sure, and thanked wholeheartedly.
I'll thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're getting close to the end, but it occurred to me just now that it's 10 o'clock. So, I'm going to call a short recess before we finish up the meeting, so that we don't rush anything. I don't think we'll have very much business to do after we get back. But let's, let's, I'm going to call a short recess of, oh, about 10 minutes. It's just about 10 o'clock. As close to 10 after 10 as we can all reconvene would be terrific. I'll see you all then. Thanks. There we go. Our next item on the agenda is a resolution for Stephen Pallone. We all know him as the Chief. Whereas Stephen Pallone served as Director of Public Safety for the City of Gross Point Park from December 2015 through January 2021. Whereas Stephen Pallone is being recognized for his leadership, vision, dedication, and commitment to Gross Point Park that has contributed to the betterment of the lives of, of the residents and, and visitors to Gross, of Gross Point Park. Whereas Stephen Pallone was the first Director of Public Safety in the Gross Points to oversee two departments, Gross Point City and Gross Point Park simultaneously for five years. Whereas Stephen Pallone has been a successful member of the public safety community for 38 years, serving in the City of River Rouge, Village of Gross Point Shores, City of Gross Point, and the City of Gross Point Park. Whereas Stephen Pallone served as President of the Wayne County Chiefs of Police, serves on committee for the Michigan Association of Chie, of Chiefs of Police, is a member of the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, is a member of the Internal Association of Chiefs of Police. Whereas Stephen Pallone, while serving Gross Point Park, has initiated many beneficial improvements, including new training initiatives to enhance the ability of our officers to respond to emergencies, stronger cooperation with our mutual aid partners, upgraded equipment, including body and in cam, and in-car cameras, a new fire engine, new mobile radios, and a new NG 911 system, resulting in outstanding public safety service to the citizens of Gross Point Park. Resolve that the mayor and members of the City Council, the City of Gross Point Park, join in acknowledging Stephen Pallone for his 38 years of dedicated public service, and particularly for his five years of service to the residents of Gross Point Park as a Director of Public Safety. I move that this resolution be adopted. Is there support?
Support.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fluet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Steve, I know you've, you've joined us. I also know that you had a similar event at City, at Gross Point City tonight. You know, and, and actually, you're with Gross Point City a little longer than Gross Point Park. We stole at least half of your time, starting in 2015, and our city is, is the better for it. I've actually got a lot that I can say about Steve. I, I can't, it's hard to say, it's hard to put into words how much I've enjoyed working with him and the impact that he's had on our Public Safety Department and, and our service to our residents. It's really been impressive. So, I, I may come back and have a few other things to say, but I want to give others a chance to, to weigh in. So, other comments? Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Chief Pallone, I've had the pleasure of working with you on the Public Safety Committee. I've learned a lot from you. You've been very responsive and always looking out for the safety of our residents, and that goes from the schoolchildren on up. I also witnessed you in the way you handled the marches this summer, and they were very successful, and you set the tone. And I, I really appreciate that. I think the residents did, because we saw around the country, it didn't always go that way. And so, I really thank you for the way you handled that. Those were very emotional times, I know, for everyone. So, I truly appreciate that. I wish you all the best, and I hope you won't be a stranger. I know we'll be able to call on you, and that you'll, you'll still be around, but not in the same way. So, best of luck to you.
Anybody else? Who's next? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, you know how highly I think of you, and I hope you know how highly the council and the community thinks of you. This is a bittersweet moment. You're, we're, in my opinion, losing the finest Director of Public Safety in the Detroit metropolitan area. Although I do know that you're, you're leaving for a promotion as City Manager of Gross Point Shores. But the five years I've known you, you've just been so responsive, so caring, and so concerned about your officers in getting them prepared and well-trained. And in typical Steve Pallone fashion, he announced his leaving back in November. Now, there are some department heads and what have you that could just announce they're leaving, and they're gone the next day. That's not Steve Pallone. Steve Pallone wanted to make sure that the department was prepared for the transition. He worked very hard at that. He's worked very hard at training the interim, the presumed interim chief as well. And that's just the kind of person he is, and that's the kind of administrator he is. I'll stop at that. Just say thank you very much for your service, Steve, and God bless you and your future endeavor.
Other comments from council. Councilmember Hodges.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Chief Pallone, I see so many great qualities in you, and I'm really glad we've had a professional of your skill level on our team, particularly at these difficult times. And for me, the word that I see most shine through in you is tough. And that's defined as physically and emotionally strong, able to do hard work and to deal with harsh conditions, strong and durable, and not easily broken. You, my colleague, have been tough in every way. Tough enough to lead, tough enough to inspire, tough enough to transform, tough enough to plan for the future, tough enough to speak truth, tough enough to enable and empower our team with tools and training, tough enough to do so with decency, character integrity, and tough enough to march. So, thank you for making us proud, and best wishes to you on your new endeavor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Pallone. We've, we spoke often before I was on council, including city manner, city matters, some personal matters, and school safety. I appreciate all you've done for myself and for our city. I've learned a lot from you, even more so during this last year as being part of council and seeing the intricacies of what you, what you do behind the scenes. You always go above and beyond, and you're an amazing example for your peers, your staff, and for any public safety officer or representative. I want to say thank you from my, wholeheartedly say thank you and congrats. And I'm sad to see you leave, but I'm glad you'll be close by. So, good luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody, any else council? Okay, I if I could, Turner wants to say something. I don't know. Is that in order? Okay, so you turn.
Probably, probably not. But very briefly, because we work closely together, it's been an honor and a privilege for me these last few months. I know it's been a tremendous honor for our firm to work with your department in the Public Safety Department. You know, nothing but the highest regard from the lawyers we have that work in the Prosecution Department. And I, I think back to just one Saturday where there was some issue we were dealing with, and you were lamenting the fact that you were stuck in front of your computer, and I was really happy that I was dragged out of yard work with my wife. So, that was a good day for me, and I know maybe not your preferred day. But, but thanks, Chief. It's, it's really been short-lived, but I truly enjoyed working with you. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, thanks. I think that's it. So, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap it up. It's my turn again. The chief came on board in December of 2015, and I became mayor in November of, of 2015. So, we, we, our, our tenures are somewhat in parallel. And I truly appreciate it as a new mayor, the professionalism that Steve brought to the department. the professionalism that Steve brought to the department and 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 it was obvious to me right away. I'd already served on council for a long time, but it was obvious to me right away that that Steve was a a great choice for our city. You know, his his sense, his his professionalism, his leadership, he effectively modernized our department, not only in 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 physical ways, as as are mentioned in the resolution, but in in many ways in in the approach to policing and approach to interacting with the community. And I was very impressed by that by by that. The most recent example that Councilmember Reed brought up is his approach to the marches that we had this past summer. His he's obviously respected by the entire administration and all of his officers. He was apparently liked well enough in Gross Point Shores that they want him back as City Manager. He left as as the Director of Public Safety, so again, we were fortunate to have you, Steve. We didn't have you as as long as I hoped that we would, but I wish you all the best in Gross Point Shores and and perhaps after when we start having our mayor manager meetings again, I'll I'll see you in a different role. So, thank you. Steve, Steve, congratulations. Anything that you'd like to offer?
Well, I I really don't want to prolong a ten twenty-one meeting here, but I would just have a few things to say. Well, first of all, if I would have known I could have got away with it was past my bedtime, I would have done that about four meetings ago, but since that didn't happen, I'll I just want to say, first of all, it's been a pleasure. I gotta tell you, it's been an honor. I've been blessed to build some relationships, and I think I said this at the city council meeting as well. You know, life is about relationships. You know, all the other things that we do, it all comes down to that, and I've built some relationships with people here that will last the rest of my life, and and I hope they feel the same way. I've worked for a great mayor and council that have been supportive to the Public Safety Department as well as myself, and you know, all the credit that you've given to me tonight is somewhat undeserved because it 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 should be for the whole team, and I I really mean that sincerely. Am I just saying that? I had a great staff to work with. I mean, spreading out between doing the two cities what would have been a daunting task if it had been not been for a great staff. My command staff, as well as the public safety officers and dispatchers, are all just all part of a team that work hand in hand with one another. We all have our place in the in the organization and work well together, and it really made my job easy. So that being said, I I want to really, a couple of things, if I can just a couple more little things here. One, I want to thank Nick and especially Nick Sizlin, who I've been working with, and and I can say this, and I hope everyone will take this for what it's worth. I've worked with Nick, and I've watched him, and I I I always say the kid, you know, I I call him a kid, and I'm gonna get in trouble for that, but I'm sixty-three, so I guess I can get away with that, and and I, you know, he has done a fantastic job. He's come in the middle of city government in a tumultuous time in our nation, as well as in local government sometimes. And I would say this to the residents and council that you you have a diamond in the rough with Nick. He works hard every day. He's ethical, and I just want to thank him because he's been a good friend to me, and and I've enjoyed working with him and wish him the best of luck as he continues on his career. I just I did want to say that before closing here tonight, and just thank every one of you for your support and your kind words tonight. And I I I will be around whenever needed. I have to drive through Gross Point Park and get to Gross Point Shores every morning at five thirty or six o'clock, so I'll be stopping whenever they need me. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Congratulations. That's worth a round of applause. Okay, now we could talk about you for a lot, but I think it's daylight. We should move on. Thanks. The next item on the agenda, Beautification Commission Appointments. This is in the normal calendar, normal course of things. The first one is Ann Baloo. Ms. Baloo has been a resident of Gross Point Park since nineteen seventy-seven, is a past recipient of beautification awards, and has been an active member of the commission since her appointment in two thousand nineteen. I move that Ann Baloo be reappointed to a three-year term ending in two thousand twenty-four. Is there support?
Support.
Councilmember Reed, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes, motion passes. She's been reappointed. I don't know that she's with us in the meeting. I talked to a lot of people, and I don't think she was gonna make it, but she may. Can you confirm she is not? Okay. Bradley Etheridge. Mr. Etheridge was raised in Gross Point Park and has resided in the city more recently since two thousand ten. He's been an enthusiastic contributor to the commission since his appointment in two thousand nineteen. I move that Bradley Etheridge be reappointed to a three-year term ending in two thousand twenty-four. Is there support?
Support.
Councilmember Rowland? Discussion, call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes, motion passes. I don't know if Brad is with us tonight. Full disclosure, I've known Brad, I think, since he was in elementary school because he went to defer and Pierce with with one of my sons.
It's past his bedtime.
Could very well be. Okay. Armin Julian. Ms. Julian has been a resident of Gross Point Park for nine years and has been a tireless and creative contributor to the commission since her appointment in two thousand fifteen. I move that Armin Julian be reappointed to a three-year term ending in two thousand twenty-four. Is there support?
Support.
Councilmember Reed? Call discussion, call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes. Motion passes. I don't think Armin was gonna be with us this evening. Nicholas Guaz. Mr. Guaz was among the applicants for the open council seat now filled by Ms. McConnell. He's been a resident of Gross Point Park since two thousand fifteen. He's a teacher and counts horticulture among his interests. I move that Nicholas Guaz be appointed to the commission seat formerly held by Jennifer Munson to a three-year term ending in two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Munson will be missed on the commission or she chose not to submit an application for reappointment. Is there support? Or that was council, Mayor Protem? Yeah, Mayor Protem. There was a tie there. Discussion, call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes, motion passes. Next, Carolyn Byrd. Ms. Byrd has been a resident of Gross Point Park for nine years. She is a medical compliance coordinator and a student with an interest in floral floral design and gardening. I move that Carolyn Byrd be appointed to the unexpired term remaining of Dave Samini, term ending in two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Samini was an active member of the commission since two thousand two and has moved out of Gross Point Park. Is there is there support? Councilmember Rowland? Discussion, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Lewitt?
Yes.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes, motion passes. Again, I don't know if Carolyn is on the call. I don't really expect her to be, but she could be. We don't think so. Okay. Next item on the agenda are Planning Commission Appointments. Appointment. Patrick Coletta. Mr. Coletta was among the applicants for the open council seat now filled by Ms. McConnell. He's been a resident of Gross Point Park for eight years and is a practicing attorney currently serving as an assistant prosecutor. He has a young family and a strong interest in keeping Gross Point Point Park a wonderful place to live and finding new ways to keep the city friendly, welcoming, beautiful, and safe. I believe you'll be an excellent addition to the commission. I move that Patrick Coletta be appointed to the seat currently held by Michael Ficken for a term ending September two thousand twenty-three. Is there support?
Support.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Padgett?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
McConnell?
No.
Lewitt?
No.
And Mayor Dennis.
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. Coletta is our newest planning commissioner, replacing Mr. Ficken. Thank you. That brings us to council comment on new business. Is there any council comment related to new business? Councilmember Lewitt?
One thing I just wanted to mention about the appointments tonight is I I went back again and looked at the Facebook posts, and I I didn't see where applications for beautification were specifically solicited. I don't think we were short on existing applications, but I just wanted to ensure going forward that, especially when we have this number of positions coming open, that we are getting that communication out there and making sure that our residents are aware that the openings are there and and encourage them to apply. I looked back on Facebook to, I think, the end of October, and I didn't see an announcement for beautification. So I I just wanted to make sure we're always we're always making sure the residents are aware of these things.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comment? Councilmember Reed?
Very, very briefly. I just want to say I'm gonna miss George McMullen. Thank you for recognizing him. He was one of a kind, and I don't think we'll ever see another one like him, and he deserves all the accolades he's been getting and then some, and I hope there are more to come. That's all.
Couldn't agree with you more. Any other comment? Councilmember Rowland?
Yeah, I have I have four small things. One is there's been, and I I know some some people have reached out to you, Nick, and I you always handle things when I send them to you, so I want to say thank you. But there's been a poll on the intersection or the median of Middlesex for over a year, a utility poll just laying there between, I think it's between Essex and Avondale. And it's been sitting on that median for over a year. We walk our dogs past there a lot, and people have emailed me, and and I've reached out to you before. I know you you said you address it. I don't know if it got lost, but I'm wondering if we can just get rid of that poll. It's been sitting in the it's a tall, you know, however tall the utility polls are, but it's just been laying in that median for for over a year. So you and I can talk offline about it, but I I I mentioned to the the two residents that emailed me in the last month that I would bring it up. So and like I said, you always address everything we bring up on the on the double, so I appreciate it.
You could send me a follow-up email on that. Appreciate it. So like we said, yeah.
No problem. The second thing is the Diversity Inclusion Committee meeting or initiative, I want to call it. It's not really a committee yet. That meeting is scheduled for end of January. I reached out to Darcy and Laurie, Councilmembers Reed and McConnell, to see if we could move that to to February. We're trying to get some some more some more people involved that are will be important to our discussions. So I'll reach out to you, Nick and Jake, to make sure we can have a date where all five of us can meet. So that'll be moved to February, hopefully. The third thing is for Lieutenant Bostic. We had an issue where obviously things were moving fast with defer and Pierce opening and mayor as well. And we're always worried about kids crossing. Now the fifth grade's over at Pierce in middle school. I think it was just slipped through the cracks, or maybe maybe Pierce didn't ask that the crossing guard be there at Pierce dismissal as well. I think the elementary school gets out earlier or later than Pierce, so Pierce's crossing guard wasn't there for when they got out. I was tagged in a Facebook post. I reached out to Lieutenant Bostic and Nick in in a matter of an hour that it was handled. So they it was just something they they weren't aware of. I want to mention to every all our residents that communication is really key. Our administration, our our city offices, city, city services respond really well to emails and phone calls. So remember, there's always the 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 ability to call or to email anyone in the city offices, and and they will get on top of things. If you feel like you're you're being ignored, then you can reach out to us as well, but our city services and city administration is really receptive of all those things. So thank you for that, but that was handled. We talked to, I think, Marcia. Marcia Pharaoh is the crossing guard in front of between Pierce and and defer. So we talked to her this morning, as our daughter just started school back up today for the first time since March. So it's a it's a relief. I would say a lot of other words, but it's just a relief that to have these kids back face to face. I hope everything goes well. But just to let everyone know in the city that school is back in session in middle school, so please be careful driving around. If you're in a hurry, go to Jefferson or go to Matt. Don't go through our neighborhoods. We want we want to have a real safe transport for those kids. The last thing is is to all of council, the mayor and city manager, the communicator. We've been missing out on our communicator since COVID started, I believe. That's the one document that goes to every house in our city. I know the mayor has a big part of that or a big message that he shares in those communicators. City administration gets to share updates. We're wondering, after our beautification committee commission meeting, we were wondering if what are the what what's the status of the next communicator? And is there a way that we can all encourage us to have a communicator, whether or not classes are involved? But to be able to share updates and and highlights of our city, it's it's a really great document, and it kind of creates a history remembrance of what's going on. So I I don't know if you have any answers on that, Nick.
Yeah, so thank you. You had something that Chad Craig Parks and Rec actually works on that communicator piece. So typically, like you had noted, you know, with COVID nineteen, you know, much much of the content of that is programs and classes. However, I I do think, you know, we could see for the foreseeable future, there could be a lot of those still not available. So it's certainly something I've thought about that we can retool and maybe look at for this two thousand twenty-one, providing a different content and such. So yeah, it's something we're looking into, and I I see it coming back, so.
Yeah, I mean, is there a way for for us to encourage it? I don't know if everyone on city council wants to think about this for the next couple of weeks and see if we if we have to vote on it to put out a communicator in March.
No.
I don't think any votes required.
We can do it. Yeah.
Or to share their thoughts, too, you know, what can be included. There's there's many things. Since we don't have any programs going on, there's a lot of updates that happen with COVID going on, and like I said, the mayor has a message there that goes to everybody. So it's quite important for for everyone to see that. And then there's a lot of our commissions that have updates and things like that 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 really get the word out on what's going on, and to let people know, hey, there's Zoom meetings every month of our city council. If you haven't known, now is the time to jump in because we're gonna continue on Zoom for the foreseeable future. So I think it's a really important resident-focused document that shares what's going on in the city. So thanks for your time.
Councilmember McConnell?
I I want to echo what Councilmember Rowland said about the communicator. I will say that I actually spoke with Mary Beth, and she indicated that it was out of, I think, caution because the rec department, you know, I mean, they've had some some challenges as it relates to not being able to have as many members and have the theater open and all that. So I think it was more, at least I got I took from her that it was airing from a budgetary cautionary approach more than anything. But I do think there are seniors, there are residents we've heard from on social who are not engaged on social media, who don't get access to the information via the emails. And so I, you know, certainly would love if the Communication Committee could do a deeper dive. But you talked about flyers for the master planning process. It seemed like there's a perfect home for education through that. And this is a totally random aside that hopefully we can delve into further, but I'm not, I I'm certainly empathetic to the public and all of our concerns about the length of these meetings. And so I I hope that we would consider not doing a roll call vote for every single item. Seems like there are some items, particularly even if you think about what we voted on tonight, that could have been done by just all in favor, all opposed. So just a just something to noodle over. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive a notification this week that there is a ribbon cutting for our brand-new Alma's Kitchen on the fourteenth at two P M. Alma's Kitchen on the 14th at 2:00 PM. So that's exciting. And then also just a warm happy new year to everybody. And knowing that, I thought I would take a quick look back 100 years ago and I learned a couple of interesting things I needed to share. One, the Gross Point School District was formed in 1921. So that prompts an opportunity to welcome our new school board members who are meeting for the first time this evening. And certainly of significance to us is the Trombley School. And I look forward to picking up that discussion now that the new board is seated. And that prompted another quick history question. I don't know about you all, but I've always wondered why Trombley School has no E, Trombley Street has an E. And I learned that the original Trombley family did have an E, although you can find more than five spellings of that name from Tremble to Trombley to Tremble to Trembley with an E Y and E and others. So, and they were some of our earliest settlers from French Canada as King Louis XV provided some incentives to head off some of the English incursions. So I just thought that was interesting and worth sharing and a way to, again, wish everybody a happy new year and testimony to how much I'm looking forward to working together with everybody and knocking some of our things off our dashboard list. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else before we go to public comment? Mayor Protem?
Alabama is leading Ohio State 34 to 17 at the half. So we'll see how it goes for the remainder of the game.
It's 38-17.
I have to say, what's that?
17 in the third.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for the update. I think now we move on to public comment, non-agenda items. City manager, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor Denner, I do have a few written public comments from the non-agenda items. And so I'll go ahead and get started. This comment comes from Jay Hackelman of Berkshire Road. Great to see progress at the new DPW site. It will be a welcome visual improvement over the stretch of vacant buildings, which has greeted eastbound travelers on Mack Avenue for years. Is one who has visited the existing dump we have called the Gross Point Park DPW. I know that the replacement will be a great improvement in work environment as well as a boost to efficiency and safety for all who work or have business there. This comment comes from Mr. Neem Fama of Belfour. Good evening. In recognition of National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, I wanted to ask the mayor and council members to join the community in honoring our Public Safety Department and Director Poloney on his final meeting. I also would ask that council collectively show their support for law enforcement, reach out to Principal Rayum to institute the Panda Program. On another public safety issue, it is my understanding that one park resident has continually asked the city reopen various traffic control closures in our city. I couldn't disagree with him more. To reopen these sites would endanger the safety of hundreds of park citizens. To even consider such action without consulting the residents that would be most affected by such action would be highly irresponsible. Shifting to another issue that is endangering many park residents, I am requesting that council meet with Gross Point Public School System Board members immediately to discuss returning students back to face-to-face instruction. Many park students are needlessly suffering due to the poor decision-making by administrators. In closing, I would like to thank park leadership for the much-needed progress in Mack Avenue. Like many in our city, I'm very appreciative of council and hope they see to it that the DPW employees get the safe and modern work environment they deserve. So pleased to see the block of blight is no more. This comment comes from Mr. Greg Donnelly of Lake Point. Why is the lease for the new DPW building not on today's agenda? It was presented by the mayor, city manager, and city attorney last month as being urgent to move forward on. Why is it not now urgent enough to have the concerns raised last month addressed and be again on this month's agenda? When will the city council be holding specific votes regarding the closure and vacation of the following streets and alleys before the DPW project and the art center are undertaken? These votes are required by city council per section 7.6 of the city charter. You are aware that you are violating the charter by not holding these votes. Wayburn Street between Mack Avenue and Gothie, the alley between Maryland and Wayburn Streets, just south of Mack Avenue, Kirchville Avenue at Wayburn Street for the previous 2014 closure that is now a so-called circular intersection, Wayburn Street north of Jefferson Avenue, the alley between Maryland and Wayburn Streets just north of Jefferson. Finally, I continue and implore you, implore you, as I have for some time now to consider the historic opportunity, we have to reopen our borders of Detroit. Please vote now to right this wrong. Mayor Denner, those are my written public comments. Now I'm going to ask Leah if we have any spoken public comments at this time.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. Yes, I actually have quite a few people in the queue for public comment. So I am going to share the three-minute timer. And then I think most of you have made comments before, but just so you know, what I will do is I will call your first name. I will ask you to unmute yourself and state your full name and city residency for the record, and then I will start the timer. So Mary, you are first. If you can, please go ahead and state your full name and city residency. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Leah. Mary Rulo, Gross Point Park. I'd like to ask that before the Planning Commission Master Plan Visioning Session next month, that the opportunities for public participation and input be clear for the entire process as well. How much of the process will be public? What is the timeline and what and when are the main deliverables? I think I heard Jake say that all the, all the rest of the meetings will be public, so I will be looking forward to and expecting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
Cynthia, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
To this honorable body, my name is Cynthia Douglas. I reside in Gross Point Woods. I am the president of the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP. We submitted a resolution from the Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP calling for an end to the discrimination, discriminatory hiring practices in Gross Point Park Public Safety Department. And it reads, whereas the Gross Points and Harper Woods NAACP is a duly chartered and national association of colored people covering the municipalities of Gross Point Park, Gross Point City, Gross Point Woods, Gross Point Shores, and the cities of Harper Woods and East Point with memberships residing in all seven communities. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality rights of all persons and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination in articles of the NAACP Constitution as an objective for the organization to remove all barriers of racial discrimination through demographic, demographic processes. Whereas the city of Gross Point Park Public Safety Department currently exists exclusively of white male public officers, which does not reflect any diversity, including African-Americans and any other minority serving as public safety officers or in any senior positions such as public safety director, lieutenant, or detective. Whereas with the exception of one woman serving in recent history as a public safety patrol officer and only one white woman have been hired and assigned to dispatchers or in clerical support services since the Gross Point branch founded in 2015 based on experiences and observe, observations since the establishment of Gross Point Park as a city in 1954. I'm going to just jump to the whereas's because you all have probably received this. Therefore, be it resolved, the Gross Points and Harper Woods NAACP branch calls upon the city of Gross Point Park to review and change its policies and procedures that have resulted in historically discriminatory hiring promotional patterns and practices that prevent women, African-Americans, and people of color from serving as public safety officers, public safety directors, supervising officers, and detectives in the public safety department. Forty-four seconds. Therefore, it is resolved, the Gross Points and Harper Woods NAACP calls upon the city manager, mayor, and city council to honor their commitment stated during the city council meeting in December 2020 to work with Gross Point Harper Woods NAACP, Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Association of Chiefs and Police Associations of Law Enforcement Standards, National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and Michigan Department of the State Police to ensure a diverse panel of candidates, including men and women of color, are interviewed for the position of public safety director. Thank you very much and happy new year to everyone.
Thank you. Next comment?
Anna, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Anna Signorino at the 1200 block of Woodier. I want to thank and commend all of our city council members for passing the donor policy. That was a real win for, for us as a community. I would also like to thank Councilwoman Michelle Hodges for identifying our true benefactors, our partners when it comes to our city and really the progress that we've made forward. Interesting enough, enough that she has commented on our private partners, which is the anonymous donors. She had indicated that it was an increased level of, of success. Some of those nice-to-have amenities, which includes a dog park, seeing as she didn't actually name the dog park donors as a city benefactor or as, as, as a donor. Interestingly also is that Becker Landscaping has a contract and has been awarded the major contract in Gross Point Park for their landscaping above and beyond our true contract with Greater Detroit Landscaping for business here in Gross Point Park. Also, we have not reached out to Sue Grissom with Grissom, Metz, Andrews, and Associates from their work that they provided on the dog park analysis in 2015. There's no conflict of interest. There's no quid pro quo with Sue Grissom at this law firm here, this consulting firm. And it's interesting that we have not reached out to multiple sources. If we do have an interest in creating a dog park, why other firms have not been outsourced? But it's only based on a relationship, based on the initial donor of Ms. Cotton, who has a relationship with Becker Landscaping. I disagree with Councilwoman Reed in that time and effort should be eliminated because time and effort can be monetized on our taxes based on a business or, or individual taxes. Also, I would like to propose that I would be considered for the planning committee if we're looking for nine residents who are interested in moving this city forward. I would like to be considered as a member of that. And you're welcome to, to that meet and to consider me as a member of the planning commission. Based on Hodges, Reed, and saying that we should have more residents for that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please?
Cheryl, you are next. I see that you're already unmuted. If you can, please state your full name and city residency. Please go ahead.
Sure. Cheryl Zedman, Gross Point Park. And my comment is relative to new business and in relationship to Gross Point Finest. Filling the shoes of Chief Poloney is no easy feat. The chief is one of the most well-respected and best in the state of Michigan. Cops count and leadership matters. The professional resources, city manager Nick Seisland has proposed for recruitment of a new police chief are remarkable and much appreciated. With respect to diversity, though, there is a national shortage. There's a shortage of qualified law enforcement officers of any ethnicity, white, black, and Hispanic, and others, and any gender. The pool of minorities is especially scarce. Nationally, 65% of police officers are white. Detroit Police Department has an extensive HR, an army department and leads the nation as one of the major cities with the highest percentage of black officers, which is reflective of the current overall city demographics. But in a city with 78% black population, the 2021 cadet class, I just saw them sworn in last week by Chief Craig, it's 43% white. Nearly half of the new DPD, new officers sworn in by Chief Craig are white. Minorities are needed. The city of Detroit, with all the professionals they have, and they're still unable to recruit and swear in minorities as LEOs reflective of the demographics of the city of Detroit. Here in Gross Point Park, though, we have a wonderful new opportunity. We have minorities, including women, on our city council. Now, along with this community and grassroots group of activists from all over the region, we're seeking to increase diversity in law enforcement agencies, and we need this direct assistance. We need this now from the leaders on council to mentor and encourage minority candidates to attend the academy, help students physically train for M-COHL, achieve success as an LEO cadet. This new leadership we have on council has an opportunity to make a serious contribution to not only Gross Point Park, but the city of Detroit and the entire region. There are 108 openings today for LEOs, including Harper Woods, plus the Michigan State Police. City of Detroit and all will benefit by increasing the number of minorities. We can best reflect our current demographics in the city of Detroit and the region. Please accept this, please organize and support this most important initiative in recruiting and mentoring minorities to join the academy and pass the M-COHL. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, next comment?
Lawrence, you are next. Even though we're on public comment and it's your comment, Mr. Gannon, we're still not having anyone use webcams. So I'm just going to ask you to state your full name and city residency. Please go ahead.
Lawrence Gannon, Gross Point Park, 25-year resident. I'll keep my comments really brief. I just wanted to say I'm very excited in the 25 years to see the new thoughts and new ideas that are coming out to the council, from the Planning Commission to the diversity orientation. And I would like to call to everyone's attention that most of these positions are volunteers. And I was always curious why they don't schedule these meetings, this four-hour meeting being one of the shorter ones, to a Saturday because most people have jobs and need to get to work. I was told that it's mandated in the city charter. I was looking to see when the city charter was last revised or taken a look at, and I couldn't find anything. So I would like to plant a bug that perhaps maybe it's time for committee to get together to look at the city charter and to see if it's, if it fits today's structure and what works most for it to become more user-friendly. Other than that, I'm excited at all the new changes. I'm excited at the new attitudes and I want to wish everybody a happy new year and looking forward to this coming year. Good night.
Thank you. Leah, next comment?
Montana, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your, go ahead, sorry.
Obviously, this is actually Dick Schroeder, 700 block of Lake Point. To assume that something nefarious was happening under Chief Poloney to keep the Gross Point Park Police Department minority-free, I think, is a disservice, especially after what we heard about what a great gentleman this man is. And I know him personally and he is nothing, nothing but what, what he, what he espouses himself to be. My wife worked as the assistant to the chief of police for one of the local suburbs here. And he is also a great man that actually Chief Poloney knows. And he spends a lot of time trying to recruit minority police officers. And there is such a shortage of minority police officers in the area that it's just nearly impossible to find quality candidates. And when they do find a quality candidate, they throw themselves at these candidates trying to get these people on board. So I don't think there is anything nefarious about what the Gross Point Park Police look like now. I also served the community for 40 years, giving anesthesia to the Gross Points. And for many years, I have been talking to my anesthesia educators to increase the minorities in the anesthesia, nursing anesthesia careers. And it's just so hard to get people that are qualified to go through the training, go through the hard work. that are qualified to go through the training, go through the hard work. Um, and it's such a long haul for these young men and young women, uh, both in anesthesia and in public safety. Uh, my brother's in public safety now and the way they are treated out in there by the public, it is discouraging for anybody to get into the, um, public safety careers. And I know that we will get our minority, uh, applicants and I know they'll be qualified. But please don't assume there's anything wrong about the way this, this city is, is going after minority hires. Also, as I said last time, I'm an American with a disability. Please don't make anything difficult crossing streets by opening up streets that don't need to be opened. Kirchvall at Wayburn is a thorough fair. It slows traffic down. I've never seen anybody race through that, that roundabout. Please protect us with minor, uh, with disabilities also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment.
City Manager Seisland, I have no further public comment at this time.
Hey, whoop. Okay. Thank you. Um, that is our last agenda item before, uh, before adjournment. I did want to clarify one thing that was made in public comment. Uh, we see backer landscape around our city a lot. They're a sub, they're a subcontractor to DTE uh, in doing the landscape work around the city, uh, not the city of Gross Point. Um, okay. Having said that, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one comment real quick? Um, I, I received my COVID vaccine, uh, vaccine today. Um, uh, shot number one. And, uh, I just want to encourage everyone that has the opportunity when it comes about to, to take this vaccine. It's our first route to, uh, to help get us back to normal. Um, I'm having no side effects. I've been in this seventeen-hour meeting with no side effects. So I just want to let everyone know. And, uh, just to encourage everyone on that. So sorry, sorry to extend this meeting.
Good, good, good encouragement. I, I can tell you, I personally can't wait to, uh, get the jab.
It was painless.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Second.
Well, uh, call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Flue.
Yes.
And Mayor Dunn.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. I have to say, uh, I guess that we might be able to get done by 10 o'clock. The city manager guessed we might, uh, get done by 10:30. Uh, we were both optimists. So have, have a good rest of the evening and, uh, I'll see you all soon. Good night.
Happy New Year.